Board of Trustees present this evening are Trustee Adams, Trustee Carrera, Trustee Hodges, Trustee Durant, Trustee Jensen, Trustee Newhouse, and Trustee McDaniel. I would like to ask everyone to turn off and silence their cellphones or any electronic devices. The first order of business is a review of the minutes from previous meetings. Do any trustees have any changes or corrections to the minutes from April 7th work session? April 11th our special call session, and April 12th the regular board meeting. No changes?
Well, I have tiny little typos things. On page 11, 5.4, oh no, it's 5.3. The second sentence, the verb is the wrong tense. This summer, Spring ISD will implement, shouldn't be passed.
Was that the only ones?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other changes? All right, these items, these items will be submitted as part of the consent agenda for our May 10th board meeting with the one correction of section 5.3. Thank you. Our next item is our superintendent's remarks. At this time, I'd like to recognize our superintendent of schools, Dr. Lapita Inahosa.
Thank you, President Durant, members of the board, all of those that are here with us tonight. It's already evening, and then those of you that are watching from home, just really excited. We've had such a busy month since the last time we were with you. But just really excited that for the first time in two years, we will be coming back together in May. Our official May meeting, which is May 10th, we will be back together at the School for International Studies at BAML. So it's May 10th, I want to make sure I get it right, May 10th at 7 o'clock, we will be back in person to recognize our students that have had achievements that go beyond the local level. They've received state and national awards, and we will have over 150 students that will be joining us that evening. So for our board, get ready, it's going to be an exciting evening. And for our students, you're receiving your invitations, and we ask that you bring your parents, bring your principal, bring your teachers. Time for us to be able to celebrate, and so that's next Tuesday. We will also be going back to our tradition to have our students be the MCs. And so this time, we will have two students from Spring High School that will be our MCs for the evening. And so just excited to get back to our tradition, to be able to celebrate our students. Next, and many parents, if you're here or you've been at home, you know that we are doing a school quality survey. For our parents and for our staff, that survey has closed. However, for our students, we've left it open a little bit longer because we realized that our students are in the midst of either preparing for the state exams or are in the middle of the exams. So for our students, we're leaving it open until May 13th. And I urge our students to do the same thing that parents and our teachers have done, is to take the time and fill out the survey. It's really quick, it's online, but it is so very important for all of us to get your feedback, to let us know how you think school is going for you. Is it a place that you're learning? Is it a place that you feel supported? So take the time for our students that are still having completed their survey. And for our board, we will have the results of that survey at our June meeting, which will help us lay the foundation for our strategic plan as well as for our goals for this coming school year. And pre-K, remember pre-K, we talked about pre-K. We've always offered pre-K for the students that are eligible for the federal program. We do have in Spring ISD full day pre-K. And you know, thanks to you, our board, since last year, we've been offering pre-K for all students that are eligible, that is, are four years old by September 1st. And so we've been doing our registration, our roundup, and I'm so excited to let you know, we have over 1,000 students already preregistered. 1,000 students. Our goal is to have 1,500, and I know with our curriculum department, with all the help that we are receiving in the schools, we'll reach that really shortly. So that's a huge accomplishment for us. The other piece, and you probably have seen Twitter, or you've received for our parents, notices at home, we are having our summer program. It is called Summer Bridge for the students that need some additional support so they're prepared for next year. And so we are in the process of registering the students now. Registration is open until May 18th. And so we want all of our students, we want the parents to take the time, register students because we want them in school. And then I know our board is sending out some messages to our teachers just to say we're recognizing our teachers. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, but in reality, we all know, we appreciate and we value our teachers year round. This is the time to celebrate them, and do want to thank all of the PTOs out there, all of our businesses, and our churches that have taken time to come to our schools and show their support and their value of our teachers. And then last but not least, I hope everybody's on Twitter, our board was busy, and I know they're going to be talking about that in a minute, because yesterday, we were busy recognizing, or our board was busy recognizing our employees that have excelled. And I had the opportunity to join them and just, just so excited to see all the employees out there, not only the ones that were recognized, but all of their supporters. And don't forget, graduation is around the corner. That's what we work towards, you know, every year. And so we will be live at Planet Board for all of our graduations. And we're also giving the opportunity to the students, the valedictorian, the salutatorian, and the class president to do their speeches live if they choose to do so. Our communications department has already recorded all of them, and they're ready to go. And we're giving the students the opportunity to go live. This will be the first time in two years for them to be able to do this. So just excited and very appreciative of the board and their support as we celebrate our teachers and celebrate all of our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Inahosa. And we are all very excited about after two years being able to get back to normal and get in person and celebrate our students and their accomplishments. So thank you for all those informative updates. At this time, our next agenda item is public agenda participation. So it just gives the community an opportunity to speak on any agenda items before they're addressed by the board. So at this time, Dr. Bigley, do we have anything, Mr. Bigley, do we have anything on anyone here tonight?
No, Madam President.
All right, thank you. We're going to have a little bit of a change right now, so we're going to move the Spring ISD volunteer survey item up on the agenda tonight if there aren't any objections from my colleagues. This will be to accommodate a guest presenter that we have here this evening for our next item. So I'll pause a minute, make sure everyone's all right with that change. Okay. I would like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Anne Westbro.
Leading President Durant, members of the board, and Dr. Inahosa, you have a yellow folder at your seats that contains this presentation. Based on the facility and other needs that remained in the district after the completion of the 2016 bond program, we, the district, have engaged with Bayseley's and Associates to conduct a voter survey with our community members. And this evening, we have Mr. Matt Gamble with Bayseley's and Associates, who's going to come forward and speak to the board regarding the results of the survey.
Good evening, everyone. So, so we conducted this survey April 28th through May 3rd, and interviews were collected by telephone, mostly cellphones and some landlines. We interviewed 350 respondents. And before we get into the results, I wanted to go over what our objectives were. The first thing we wanted to do was just measure general attitudes about the school district, and just let us know kind of what environment we're getting into before we go out for a bond. Then we wanted to measure current levels of support and opposition to different bond proposals. And when we do this in the survey, we, first of all, we do it very early because we want an unbiased opinion, really what they feel at the time. And it's also designed to test the initial, as we call it, the initial ballot, and it's testing the ballot language, so what the voter would see printed on their ballot. We then go through a series of randomized statements or questions where we tell the respondent more information about what could be included in the bond. And that does two things. First allows us to measure the favorability of different potential bond projects, and it also allows us to inform the respondent about what the bond proposal would do. After that, we retest those ballots to determine if voters or respondents would be more supportive after learning more about what the bonds would actually do. And then we use regression analysis to determine which bond projects or other elements of the bond are most important to voters who are supportive, and that lets us know how we actually go out and talk about it. Wanted to touch a little bit about the methodology before we get those results. Having a good sample methodology is really key to having accurate results. One of the things that I'll tell you is that this is a representative sample of our likely voters, and the way we went about doing that is creating three sample regions using precinct. We tried to model those regions off of your high school attendance zones. Obviously, they're not one-to-one relationship with precinct lines, but for the most part, we were really close to your three high school zones, and we looked at how many voters come from these different portions of your district, and we looked at the midterm turnout, right? Because we're trying to understand what our reality might be in the upcoming November election. Forty-two percent of the voters are in this Spring High School zone, and so 42% of our respondents came from that zone, 20% from Decane, 38% from Westfield. Within these three sample regions, we are looking at a number of demographics to make sure that we have, again, a representative sample of voters. One of the things that we look at, of course, is gender. Forty-one percent of midterm voters are male, 41% of our respondents are male, but more importantly, we got the percentage of males and females correct in each region. Partisan vote behavior is another important demographic. A lot of times when we do this, you know, school districts wise, why are you asking them if they vote for Republicans or Democrats? Well, Republicans and Democrats think differently about these types of issues. And so it's important for us to collect an accurate proportion of our respondents so that we're looking at a real assessment of what our voters think. When you look at this, first of all, the bottom half of the slide, the base GOP to Dem vote, what we do is just look at the lowest Republican vote getter over the two-cycle period of time, and the lowest Democrat vote getter, and that lets us know what the base Republican to Democrat vote is in the district, and then everyone else is an independent. What happens in a survey is people will indicate they're independent when they might actually vote for a Republican or Democrat. They like to think of themselves as independent, and so it's really the ratio that's important. So the ratio was, in this district, is .515 Republican to Democrat based on election history, and in a survey is .533. And you'll see within region, those proportions are pretty similar. And I wanted to bring this up because when we looked at support of the high school in Spring, we can look at all the projects based on the zone the respondent lives in, but there's demographics within those zones that will also drive support of those projects.
Can I ask a quick question before we move on, Mr. Gamble? Why don't we select to look at the midterm as opposed, what was the methodology behind that as opposed to looking at a general November to November election?
The midterm, when I say midterm, it would be the November 2022 election, which is what we were kind of looking at for the next bond. So that's a different kind of animal than like the May election that all the districts are looking at in a couple days. That's going to be a much older voter, and that's-
Misunderstood. I got you saying that. Okay, my bad.
Race and ethnicity is another important demographic. The bottom half shows what the desired is, and that's based on census data and an adjustment of the Hispanic voters on the file. That's important because there's a, in Texas and really everywhere, there's a percentage of Hispanic adults by the census, and then there's a lower percentage when you look at who's registered and a lower percentage of who's turning out. So this 19% or 20% might seem low, and it is low in terms of how you look at your adult population, but when we look at midterm voters, that's where that is. And so again, you'll see regionally, those numbers are in line. And then lastly, the age demographics, they don't really tend to very much by region, but you've got 25% seniors in the midterm and 18%, 18 to 34 years old. All right? Another piece of this is, obviously, we showed you demographics are in line with those that are voting in a midterm election, but this survey also includes voters that are more likely to be voting. So we asked them, first of all, how often they vote in local elections. Thirty-nine percent say most, or they vote in all local elections. We know that's 39% of voters don't vote in all local elections, but this is that subset of likely voters. It lets us then take the sample and further split them up into the most likely and the lesser likely to vote. And when we look at the vote history of the respondents and compare it to your voter file, 35% of voters in this district voted in both the presidential 2020 and the midterm 2018. Thirty-nine percent are registered and hadn't voted in any of those two big elections. In our survey, 61% of our respondents voted in both, and only 16% didn't vote in either. So, you know, we shouldn't say just because they hadn't voted in one before, they won't vote now, but it's going to be predominantly people who have voted in elections before. So all this to say, all the data we're going to look at tonight is among a likely midterm-type voter. Another thing that we're going to look at tonight, and in this report, we kind of combine these two measures, and we look at people who voted in both the presidential and midterm, and those that say they vote in all or most local elections. And that gives us a really good indication of the most likely voters that are plugged into these types of issues, and we can see how they feel about the bond compared to others. So some of the general questions that we had, we didn't have many. The first one was just their impression of the school district, 50% positive, 32% negative. What I see here is that relatively small or low percentages of people with strong opinions, 19% strong positive, 13% strong negative, a lot of kind of opinions in the middle. We asked this because a lot of times, the fate of bonds can be tied to the image of a district, and you typically don't want to go out with a bond when your negatives are, you know, 32% in most districts would be a tough place to start out with the bond, but in this district, voters are separating their views of bonds from the image of the school district, which is a good thing. For that 32% with the negative opinion, we asked them to tell us in their own words why, just kind of wanted to learn a little bit more about what that was about. And we actually listened to what they said, wrote it down, and came up these categories. Thirteen percent of the sample said that they have a negative impression because of teachers or academics. That was the number one issue, and this is 13% of the total sample. 10% mentioned discipline and safety items, and then we have kind of all the rest, those were around the top two, and admin, school board, and COVID-19 is 5%. We kind of, mostly academics, teachers, and discipline, probably not a surprise that those are the most often mentioned things. And then we asked them their view of the district's fiscal management. Thirteen percent said the district spends the money wisely and effectively, 46% as well as to be expected, 24% wastefully ineffectively. It's very common, most districts, actually almost every district I ever asked this question, and the wisely, or the, as well as to be expected is between 44 and 49%. It's always, it's always where it is, and then you're just kind of looking at the wisely to the wastefully. Another thing I'll say is, in this climate, to be doing as good as to be expected is a good thing, right? So you can take that number and take the 13% wisely and effectively, and then you're over 50%, think you're doing a good job. So moving on to those initial ballots, again, we tried to craft those similar to the way the bond language or the ballot language would be written. The first one we had was for general, the general bonds, construction, renovation, equipment of school buildings, and the purchase of buses, the levying of a tax to increase, levying of a tax increase to pay for the bonds. You'll notice for X and Y, $490 million was asked of half the respondents, and $460 million was asked of the other half of the respondents. We did that because we split sampled an amount for the events and education center, and we wanted those amounts to add up to $600 billion, because that was sort of the total bond package that we were going after for. So that's why you have two different numbers there. Fifty-five percent of respondents said they would vote for, and 41% would vote against a bond of this amount. This is a great place to start, you're already over 50%, and you haven't even told the respondent what you're using the money for. The one caution is that the intensity behind this position is tied 50/50, a 27% strong positive, 27% strong negative. The strongly percentages are really important in elections because we can indicate the attitudes of people likely to vote, and people that are going to be the grassroots supporters, the grassroots opponents. So those intensity measures are important. There was no statistical difference, by the way, in 490 and 460 million dollars, which is a big number to the respondent over the phone. So our next question was for bonds for an education, all-purpose events and education center. Here, we split sampled 80 million dollars and 110 million dollars. There wasn't a statistical difference between the two amounts. Fifty-three percent would vote for, and 44% would vote against, pretty close to the general bond, except the intensity is a little bit on the no side, higher on the no side. And then the third prop that we tested was $30 million for the acquisition improvement of instructional technology, 50% are for this, 44% are against. Most initial ballots do not start off as strong, I should say that, and this is, like I said, a really great place to start. Want to dig into some of the demographics behind each of these ballots, and when I do that, I'm going to look at the far right column where it says extrapolate for, it just stands for extrapolated for. And what that means is we just look at the proportion of people with an opinion. So for example, 27% are strongly for, 27% are strongly against. That proportion's 50/50, right? So if only the people with a strong opinion voted, it'd be 50% for, 50% against. We can do the same thing with the total for and total against, and look at that proportion, and we really just average those two together, because again, the intensity is important, but it's not all that matters. And that just lets us get, have one number to kind of compare everything. The extrapolated for is 53.6%. It really tells me that the election were today or tomorrow, and turnout was similar to a midterm, it'd be 53.6% based on just the ballot language and the voters not knowing really what the bonds were for. For our parents, we're at 60.6, our non-parents were just under 50%. So clearly, then, our non-parents need to hear more about what the bond is going to do before they're going to be supportive of it. All the little red stars will indicate places where you have initial support under 50%. A couple other ones to point out, if they voted in both the midterm and the presidential, they're at, they're the least supported at 48.5. So those are the most likely voters. That tells us that the people that are definitely going to show up, they're going to need to hear some information about what the bonds are going to do. The people who like the bonds, they don't, they just like the concept of bonds, they don't really need to know what you're spending it on, they're the least likely to vote. So they're the ones that might need to be more encouraged to go vote, the ones that are definitely showing up, need to hear a little bit more about it. You'll notice that in the spring zone, you're at 42%, and the other two zones are in the 60s, and that's driven by the demographics of that area. Remember that, that spring zone was like one-to-one Republican to Democrat. The other two areas are much more Democratic, and that is playing out in their support of the bonds. And obviously, Republicans and Democrats are very different in their support of the bonds, and that, this is exactly why we asked the question, to make sure we get the right proportions. Moving on to the ballot for the Education and Bit Center, that's at 51%, and it's really the same story here as the general bonds in the sense that we're doing really well with our parents, but the non-parents and the most likely voters are going to need to know a little bit more about this to be supportive. And you see that difference regionally within the district. And then on the technology bond as well, does a little bit better. And that's really true to form, you're seeing a lot more of this now that the legislature's forcing districts to break them up into different props, seeing a lot more tech-only bonds, and they tend to do better than the other ones. Here, though, you still have a deficit with your parents, I'm sorry, with your non-parents, and some of the most likely voters. Right, so if they were against the general bonds, we asked them to tell us, to pick a reason why they were against it, and then to pick a next biggest reason, because we knew the biggest reason's going to be they don't want their taxes to go up. And part of that's driven from the fact that the question itself mentions the word tax increase because the ballot says that. So they hear that, and they go, I don't want my taxes to go up. So their choices were, they don't want their taxes to go up, they didn't know enough about it, they don't think the district needs more money, now's not a good time, or that the facilities are adequate. When we bring in the second response, you really see, aside from the taxes, it's mostly about, they just don't know enough about it, or a misconception about how much money the district has. The average voters understand the difference between INS and MNO and how these things are financed. I think it's encouraging that only 20, this is, this is 26% of the people who are against, so 26% of the no is because they don't think it's a good time, and only 22% of the no is because they think the facilities are adequate. Any questions on those ballots or any of that before we get into the next phase, which is the projects and the messages?
In our last bond election, we had about two-thirds approval rating. And so I, you're saying that being over 50% at this point is a good sign?
A good starting point.
A good starting point, okay.
Yeah, and just relative to other districts. Other districts would be very envious of this presentation right now, because a lot of them start off with 40% favor on initial support and with 55% opposition, and then you're having to work that much harder to get that to pass. So, I mean, clearly, and when you're going to see at the end, we can build support up in that 60, that mid-60s range that you saw with the last bond, we can get there. But voters need to, you know, they need to hear more about it.
Now, on the front sheet, it says your margin of error is 5.7%. So these things- So these things could be rather different than what we're seeing here, right? Because it's, is that standard deviation or?
Yes, yeah, that's standard. Um and so um when we um. Let me discuss the margin of error when we get to the end and we can kind of look at kind of where we started and where we ended up. But in in many ways, the survey can just is really used as a guide to kind of, you know, where where are we? Are we in, are are we in um an uphill climb or do we, is this a slam dunk? Or is this something that people will support when they learn more about it? Uh and then more importantly, do they like these projects or not? Uh you'll see that in just a second. Your, the support for all the projects is um well over um fifty percent. So even with the margin of error, you've got strong support for these projects. Um it's a great, great segue. And the first thing I wanted to mention here is um the the one project that had the lowest favorability. Was the fifty five percent for building a replacement school for spring high school. So there's that margin of error, but I wanted to word it this way because I just wanted to see what do they think about the concept of replacing the school? Without hearing about why. And usually doesn't take a lot of explanation for why. But sometimes, you know, voters need to just understand what what the situation is because it it may just sound unnecessary to them. Um so in questions ten and eleven, we followed up and question ten talked about really the condition of the building. And how um it's beyond its useful life and it's in need of continual repair. Question eleven was really more about the kind of the academic angle and the improvements that would go along with that. Not meeting current I could uh education standards and how this would allow the uh for the expansion of academic program offerings. We rotated both, by the way, both of those two statements and we found support really kind of was the same regardless of which one came first. Uh in other words, you kind of get up to that sixty four, sixty five percent support um based on uh either either one of these statements. And that's where you get with that, which is a pretty sizable amount of support for building a new school. In question twelve, we told them that this would be the first step in the district's plan to eventually bring all its schools and water standards. And this could allow for design uh for plans for a future new Westfold School. Sixty nine percent favored that. Um seventy eight percent uh favored um allowing for expansions or construction of new schools in the northeast portion. Where we said over seventy, seven hundred new homes were added just last year. Eighty percent were supportive of safety and security improvements. Um seventy eight percent were supportive of addressing deferred maintenance and we gave some examples of what that was. Uh sixty seven percent were supportive of construction of an elementary school choice. We said it would have a focus on either fine arts, STEM or foreign language, continuing the district's commitment to having more opportunities and choice. Eighty percent favored the purchase of new buses, seventy eight percent uh favored improvements to technology infrastructure. On there, seventy four percent um favored. Okay, so the, we'll put a pin in those thirty and thirty one were um really dedicated towards the uh EEC. Or the Education and Event Center. Um and so those were actually asked after later on in the survey. But that's what we we told them about the Education and Event Center. In question thirty, that um it would essentially help. With the fine arts and athletics that the students are participating in. It was really about the students um and how it helps with that. And then thirty one uh was really about the kind of the need uh that you don't have one of these and and how it could be used. Um so that slide was really projects, like what the money is going to pay for. Um this next slide is just other pieces of information that um pertained to the bond. That we wanted to put out there on to, you know, test and inform the voter and and also determine which which of these elements matters. We told them that the Citizens Committee would be studying this and making recommendations. Talked about construction cost escalation, how the state's money to address things now. Uh it won't impact senior citizens. Um we told them if all three bonds pass, it would be six, six hundred million dollars and property taxes would increase by fifty dollars a year. Uh for every one hundred thousand dollars of taxable property value. Um and we've always followed that up and told them that the district used a conservative estimate for that tax increase. Just like the last one, which actually came in with a little bit lower uh tax rate increase and was projected. We told them how the last bond was delivered on time and on budget. And that the district's tax rate is similar to other districts in the area, and if this passes, it's still going to be similar. And then the last three questions were intended to really be quote unquote negative. Um we do that for a couple reasons. One is to just to to um to remind ourselves that sometimes when a voter hears something. They may change their opinion, right? So some people will change their opinions based on what they hear. All these were randomized. At some point in the survey, you've got sixty seven percent saying they they like hearing. That the bond that the district's used a conservative estimate and the last time it actually came in lower, they like that. And then you've got um sixty five percent say, oh, I don't like the bond, knowing that you can't use it to pay teachers more money. Um and so this just shows that um sometimes when they, when voters hear something, they might um, you know, change their opinion. But what we did, um courses, you know, randomize all these and at the end, once they've heard some positive and negative statements and and learned more about it. They've really been able to factor in their final informed decision. And so uh where we started with the general bonds in question number four was that fifty five percent yes, forty one percent no. So that could be as low as fifty percent, yes, could be as high as sixty. That no could be as high as forty six percent. You've still, you've even within the margin of error, you still have more support than opposition when you start out. Um but when you, where you end up, sixty five percent, uh I think that was, as you say, you're in like the the mid-sixties with the last one. Um sixty five percent would support, thirty three percent uh would vote against. And you have a really good advantage with the intensity now too, um increasing uh that by ten points and lowering up the negative. Uh intensity by five points. And when we look at uh our our subgroups of the informed uh position. We don't find any except for Republicans um that are below fifty percent. And so what this shows is that there's the potential for support when voters become informed. Um the caveat to this is that, you know, when you go out in a midterm, there you're going to be communicating with voters. You're also going to be getting um information from people running for governor, Congress, all sorts of stuff. So there's going to be a lot of information out there and it's going to take a lot of uh different ways to talk to voters and a lot of repetition, so it gets there. But it shows that when they do know what the bonds are for, they are supportive of that. Uh question number five, the Events and Education Center, we started out with fifty three percent. Support and we ended up with sixty four percent support, thirty five percent we vote against. And you have a similar advantage now with the in- uh intensity as you did with the general lines. And then the same is true here. Um Anglo respondents are just under um fifty percent. Uh as are the Republican respondents, but uh your non-parents sixty two percent supportive of this. Uh the most likely voters, fifty eight perc- almost fifty nine percent are supportive of it. And uh I'm going to talk a little bit more about the EC and and a couple more slides. But when we look at the technology. We end up with six, seventy two percent support, twenty eight percent opposition and a really good advantage. Uh or spread on that intensity with forty eight nineteen. And here, uh really, you know, when we we looked at that general bond, we provided a lot of information about what the bonds would do. Uh here, all we told them specifically about this bond is that it would um allow for replacing outdated and worn out. Or allow for the purchase of um electronic learning devices, so students have access to the tools they need for modern learning. That's all it, that's all it really said. Um of course, they heard other things like the districts managed the funds well from the last bond. And how this one impacts seniors, um but it wasn't a lot to really um that you need to communicate on this. So now what I'm showing here are this, what we call correlation scores. And it's really how we um determine what messages are most effective or what we should be talking about. And see if I can go back to a slide. Okay, so um looking at this slide, question seventeen, we saw eighty percent of respondents. Are favorite of supportive of buying new buses when we told them kind of why we needed to do that. Uh we see that seventy eight percent are supportive of addressing deferred maintenance to schools, right? So a lot of of large, large majority of voters like the concepts, they like the projects. Now, when it comes to paying for them, that's a different story. So sixty five percent would vote for the bonds and thirty three percent would not vote for them. So what the regression analysis does is look at what is the relationship between actually liking a project? Or having a positive reaction to something we tell them. And then that that voter responded actually saying, yeah, I'd vote for that. So we know what really matters. And um these numbers are just a result of of our regression analysis for how where we measure that correlation. And the bigger the number, the better the message or the more important the message. They're not on a, these aren't percentages, they're not on a one to ten scale. Um they're just relative numbers and um just kind of walking through some of the observations. The most effective message uh or the thing that the the supportive voters like the most. Is the construction of new schools or expansions of schools in the northeast portion to uh accommodate growth. That was, that was the thing that they, when they heard that, but by the way, behind the favor and oppose that in those columns. There's, there is an uh intensity behind that. We're strongly favor, strongly oppose. And we're looking at those that strongly like this project and how they end up at the end of the survey. We found that the next best message really to communicate was that the district had used a conservative. Um estimate for the projected tax increase um and that the, just like the last bond, which came in a little bit lower than projected. The third best message with all voters or the total sample um was the technology infrastructure. And then that was followed by um the fiscal management of the prior bond. So two of the top four messages really dealt with kind of the the fiscal aspect of it. And so you can, if you want to look at, okay, what was the third best project, uh just look for the next biggest score. And that would be uh this four point eight right there. So the next best project was rebuilding spring high school. But it was when we talked about it in terms of how it would improve the education of the students. And you notice that four point eight is about four times higher than the point nine in question ten above. That tells us that when we talk about how the new school will have more modern features and expand academic programs. It's a lot better than just saying, yeah, the school's really old and needs a lot of repairs. But I liked to see that one of the best messages was what the item that was the most expensive part of the bond. Then you can look at uh the parents and you can look at non-parents and see which uh messages they really gravitated towards. Uh you'll see that for the votes part, parents and non-parents really kind of need to hear different things. Just because something isn't highlighted in light blue, it doesn't mean that it's not important. It just means that there's something else that's more uh important to communicate. If it's, if it's bad, um it'll have a negative number. Right? So when we look at our parents, uh the thing that they liked the most was the conservative estimate with the tax increase. And then you have really a two-way tie between uh technology infrastructure and deferred maintenance or addressing deferred maintenance. And then right behind that, safety, security, and the way I look at that nine point nine, so close to the ten point three. It's the importance of that statement or that project is about the same as the uh the other two that are before it. Uh by the way, we we did this regression analysis um for voters based on the three different regions. And the their ages and their vote propensity, um so you can have that. That's in the appendix of the report and is available to kind of use as a guide or roadmap to um. How to really communicate about the bond because we know communication is going to be really important. Because uh we got to particularly with our non-parents and our most likely voters, we've got to tell them what the bond is going to do. And why it's being asked of voters. Uh this slide here is really boils uh down the the top four messages into kind of an easier to digest format. Now, let's look at the um Education and Events Center real quick. Willie had those two statements about it. Um question thirty, um that a majority of high school students participate in fine arts or athletics. Or CTE programs um and that this um Education and Event Center would be used by many of these programs. We said they develop, they help develop the character and education of students or it can help it, the the center can help advance. Or enhance program offerings for students. Uh this is really a student-centric question. Um the score is a seven point five. Um the score in question thirty one is significantly higher, really across the board. These subgroups and all the ones we ran. Um and that one was talking about that that you don't have one. A a facility large enough for district-wide performances or appropriate spaces for large academic meets. And this would include a theater and athletic court and other flexible spaces. And I think I was a little surprised at first that this, the student-centric message didn't do better than the the facilities one. Um I think this is like the difference between a want and a need, right? So explain it, explaining that you need this, that was like the really the big corollary with someone saying, okay, I'll vote for the money to do it. Obviously, the 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 element of impacting students and and expanding, enhancing these programs was important as well. Right? So just to conclude, uh the majority of respondents were for all three props on the uh initial ballot test. Uh we saw that the intensity, intensity measures and the viewpoints among the most likely voters. So that the the props could really be toss-up territory if uh the election were held today. Um again, it's not, um this is a good place to start. This isn't a good place to finish, right? This is just a good, it tells us that um we're in kind of a uh an environment where there's some support for bonds. We've got to provide some more information. Uh a majority of respondents favored all the potential bond projects tested. The lowest one was at high school, not really surprising, honestly. Because that, I mean, rebuilding a high school is is quite a a a big uh task. That's a big project. Uh but you have over fifty percent support of it and it grows to sixty five percent uh with just a little bit more information. Um support for all the, all the props increased after respondents learned more about them. And the regression analysis really helps us understand what the most effective messages were at getting to that point. Um so with that, I can go back and review anything or take questions. I know it's kind of a lot of data all at once.
So I'm sure we have some questions, but I also want to allow a few more moments for the board to look through it. It's a lot.
Anything you want me to go back over?
I'm thinking, let's give them another minute or two. Do y'all need it? First of all, do y'all need another minute? Are you ready with your questions?
I have one.
I see some lights on. They're ready.
With this being my first bond process, I'm just curious, from your experience, what are some types of things? That non-parents tend to favor, just out of curiosity.
Oh, things that non-parents favor? It really just depends on the, on the district. You know, sometimes you. Non-parents really like um kind of like career technology things, like when you can tie it to getting kids jobs and something like that. Can really like that. Um you know, it really, it really depends on the district. Because the whole point of the correlation is to find out what they like and then tie it to their vote. And sometimes non-parents just aren't supportive of bonds. But um I would say. But I would say the one thing they don't like are the, you know, the athletics, athletics projects, really hard to get non-parents to kind of like those in most districts.
So to kind of follow up on her question, the non-parent category, is that an individual who's never had kids or just no more children in the district?
That's a good question, so we asked if they currently have a kid enrolled in Spring ISD, so it's, it's current parents versus non, not current parents.
And how did you just briefly calculate the extrapolation, like on page fourteen?
There, page fourteen, but they're all the same. Um, so it was, it, the extrapolation is an average. The column extract four, that's going to be an average of the intensity extrapolation and the total extrapolation. So the intensity is just going to be the strongly four divided by the strongly four plus the strongly against the total extrapolation, total four divided by total four plus total against. And then the number shown there is just an average of those two.
Mr. Allen, I noted in a couple of the questions, there is a variance between the dollar amounts. And you noted that there was no significant difference between the outcomes for that.
Yeah.
But then for question twenty-two, you didn't do that. So I'm curious about why that is.
I apologize, I have to see question twenty-two. Okay, yeah, so that, that's kind of exactly why we, we did do two different amounts. Because we were kind of talking about testing a six hundred million dollar bond. So we were talking about how, you know, we, the reality of the situation is, we don't ask voters for six hundred million dollars in bonds. Because you're going to have to present them with three different propositions by law. And so the question was, well, how much, how does the six hundred million dollars get divvied up? And, you know, we kind of thought, well, thirty million is about kind of the technology. But the education and event center, really, there was no dollar amount yet for that, depends on the scope of it. And so we said, well, what would be like a likely range? So eighty to a hundred and ten was kind of that likely range. And so I wanted to do then is for the general bond, make sure that those added up. So for the version X person, all their ballots added up to six hundred million dollars. So if you go back to.
So is that the sum of the larger amounts?
Yeah, so it says if all three bonds, if all, if all bonds pass, the total will be six hundred million dollars in bonds. And that's what the tax impact would be.
But you don't pull the sum of the smaller amounts to see if there's any variance?
The sum of the smaller amounts. Well, so the sum, the sum of the amounts was the six hundred. So what we, maybe what we didn't do is tell them, you know, the four hundred and ninety million dollars in bonds would be this much in taxes. The one eighty would be that much in taxes, the thirty would be that much in taxes. We just told them, if all these pass, this is what it's going to cost you. And that's really the, the reality of your situation. Your, the ballot's not going to have that impact, so they're just going to hear, you know, this is what taxes are going to go up. So if you look on the slide I'm showing here, version X was four ninety for the general plus eighty plus the thirty as up to six hundred. So the version Y, their amounts added up to six hundred two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that makes sense, and it's, it's good to say, like, if it's a three hundred thousand dollar home that they own, they're looking at a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
That's already do a better job of explaining that, yeah, we, we just wanted to make sure that we were commute, we were factual with the respondent when we told them the three different amounts and then later told them it's six hundred million dollars. Not that they were, not that they had a calculator with them when we were talking to them, but that we, that the report was.
Guess where my confusion was as you were presenting it? I was seeing for each different proposal, a larger amount and a smaller amount. And so I sort of presumed, without actually adding it up, that the, the version Y was gonna result in a larger sum than the version X, if you combine them all.
Yeah. And so I think the, the takeaway with the different amounts is that, again, there, there's not a difference in, in them. But we were able to do the eighty and the one ten to just kind of show that range, anywhere in that range is going to be really the same thing. Anything surprising?
I was very pleased that the informed data came in much more strongly than the uninformed. So that is our role to inform the public about the bond. And we can certainly do that, we've done it before. Some of this will have to go through our PAC that supports the bond.
Most of, yeah, most importantly, I actually was pleased with question nineteen on page eighteen. Because it lets us say, it says a diverse steering committee of citizens, community leaders and parents will meet to study and prioritize the district needs bonds. And that, that will include and bring forth the recommendation. And that's, that's how we've always done it. And that was at seventy-eight percent in favor of it. So that's really good to see that they support us doing the steering committee. Because we need to provide that committee with this information on what we've learned from the community, the facility assessment that Mr. Miranda is working on. You know, our demographic information on whether they're projecting increases of students. And so once we're able to provide all of those pieces to the steering committee, then they'll be able to come back with even some stronger recommendations. But this is really good information and a good starting point. And I'm actually pleased to see that, you know, we're, we're ahead of the game even before we get started. So that's a positive impact.
So I just want to be sure, from Chief Miranda, whether six hundred million meets all of our needs.
I think it's really going to depend, and you heard Matt say, talk about scope. So once we get into the projects and we determine scope. So for example, there was a test question about a choice elementary school. Right now, we haven't decided, because we need the steering committee's input and the board's input, the size of that building, for example, you know, how many students would it be? Would it be three hundred and fifty students, would it be more, the same with the event center? So I think it's in a range that these projects are doable at a certain scope level. You know, if we wanted to increase scope on certain projects, just like anything else, there will be some things to take away and some things to add in terms of how big the projects could be. Was that, yeah?
Yeah, that committee and their recommendations is going to be critical in Mr. Miranda being able to scope out the size and.
Yeah, I would say that, that these projects are doable within that six hundred, we wouldn't have, you know, put all of those on there with that, they're doable in that, as long as the scopes are appropriate, right? But as we expand those scopes, then, then we'd have to be looking at something different.
So in your. Oh, sorry. I'm curious about your last point, expanding. We get the committee together, committee appreciates what we are suggesting here. But the committee also comes up with some other points that we have not included here. Looking at a long seventy-five year history of Spring ISD. This is what the community has always envisioned and said. So what happens if it doesn't fall within that six hundred million? Where are we and can we extend it or just what? Because I think we do need to listen to this committee.
For sure. I would say if the committee comes back with recommendations that they feel, based on this study, the needs of the district and what the committee feels we, we need, they, they should recommend, come back to the board and recommend, we need more than that six hundred from what this committee has assessed. And then it would be up to us to make the appropriate decision based on what they recommend. So I, I don't think this is, Dr. Hoss, you chime in. This is a great, this is a starting point.
It is a starting point, thank you, Mr. Ant and Ms. Newhouse. And I think, you know, we're all, and one of the reasons we included question number nineteen, we wanted to hear from the community about a steering committee. We, as administration, you know, our board members, we see, for example, the growth that's happening right now in the northeast. And as we've met with parents and community members, they've asked, what are we going to do there? And so these questions, that particular question was tested based on the input we've been hearing from the community. We also tested the question around spring high school. Because we all know the condition of the building and we've heard from the community. We also added and tested the question around Westfield. So we were very strategic in, you know, listening very intently with, you know, to the parents and, you know, administration, our teachers in testing some of these. But we also know, which is what Mr. Ant was talking about, Mr. Miranda, we've approved, the board has approved an assessment of our buildings. And so you'll see that one of the items tested was, you know, the need of repairs. We have some older buildings that need that tender loving care. So we need money in, in that bucket to rebuild or not rebuild, using the wrong word, to repair and fix up. And so those buckets were decided upon what we've been hearing from the community. We would, as Mr. Ant said, you know, our steering committee would come here, look at what we've done. If there's additional items that we might have missed that were not tested, then that is for the board to consider, for us to go back to our bond council, look at our financial ability, right? Because as a district, we have so much opportunity that we can. And so that's where we found that six hundred million dollars was a good place to be in without having to put too much on our taxpayers, keeping that top of mind. But I think with the questions, I know that with the questions we tested, we have enough information to be able to touch all buildings that need repair, all buildings that need some of that care while addressing those very specific areas such as IT. And we know, you know, our technology infrastructure, we, needs the help, our transportation, our buses and as well as an event center. You know, currently, I know I met with parents this week and met with them last month. And, you know, when you think about our performing and visual arts and the amazing work that our students do, we don't have a place to showcase them, our CTE program. And you all participated in our tri-club, we don't have a place for them. For our convocation, for our teachers and our employees to be able to come together, there's nowhere in spring. You know, we would have to go and use the other districts' facilities. So testing that was, you know, strategic based on the needs.
And I also want to remind the board, when we had our special call session over at the teach-up facility, we gave the direction to the district and Mr. Miranda on the things that we wanted, you know, to learn from this study. So we actually drove these questions and what was asked, if you all recall.
And thank you, Dr. Hannah Hoss, for mentioning the, how we arrived at the six hundred million dollars. Because it is based on the capacity that we have within the laws and our tax values and so on and so forth. And so for that reason, at the very first, if the board chooses to go forward with creating the steering committee, the very first meeting, the steering committee would be given their parameters, which is their budget. And so then it's all about prioritization. Because as always, the needs and the request will far exceed the funding that's available. So it's all about prioritizing the needs.
Just a quick follow-up question, just based in your experience, and now that we're talking about dollar figures kind of out there, is there a percentage where, if we do start adding, for whatever reason, is there a percentage where it just kind of, like, you know not to exceed that percentage or it's just all going to die?
And it depends. Part of that is, you know, what you're adding, if, are you adding a certain project that's making, so why it's getting bigger? If there's a certain project that people aren't going to like, that is, that changes it up. The tax, relative tax increase that goes with that, that can matter. But in general, you know, like six hundred, we saw there was not a difference between four, is it four seventy and four ninety or whatever that was? You know, if, if the district wanted to move forward with like six hundred and forty, six hundred and fifty million dollars, it probably is going to test the same in the survey, right? I couldn't say you could go up as much as like eight fifty, that's a bit too much of a jump for me to, to say that's. But you, you really don't see statistical difference between dollar amounts. Except for when you also tie taxes to it. But if you're talking about having more capacity to do more with the same amount of money, it makes me feel more comfortable, comfortable saying you could go up a little bit more. Or you see differences when you start asking different dollar amounts. So if you were to say, do you like four hundred, do you like five hundred, do you like six hundred? You do start to kind of lose support, because people just, what did you ask me for, like a billion dollars next? But, you know, I think going, probably going up to seven hundred would, would be something where I wouldn't expect the statistical difference between six hundred that we did.
Do you have any, go ahead, Dr. Jenson? Just one concern I have, this was a long questionnaire.
Yeah, it was really long.
And I've been answering questionnaires when I've called. And I'm just wondering if the people who actually said, yes, I'll answer all these questions are different from the rest of our citizens.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we actually pretty sneaky with that, and we don't ask them if they want to answer questions to a survey, we just start asking them questions. And once they start the survey, most of them will finish the survey. It's really when you get into a survey of over twenty minutes where people just start to say, I'm not, I'm, I'm done with this. So we weren't in that territory, we've done twenty-five minute surveys before on really boring issues and people will hang on. God bless them, but the hardest part is getting someone to, to start asking, answering those questions. And that's again why we, we have all, we put all the things in place to make sure we have a representative sample. So like if we were to just not, if we were not to control for those things, we might end up with a whole bunch of a certain age group that's more likely to be answering the phone and taking the surveys. We monitor that throughout the night and kind of stop calling when we're ahead of the game with groups that are more responsive.
I have a quick question, going back to question number one about, do you have a positive or negative impression of the spring independent school district? Do you have an average response rate for that question?
No, I, I haven't updated it in about a year or so, but I can just, I've done like probably fourteen school, school surveys in the last like half year. And I would say that the average might be about, about right there, maybe, maybe low twenties. That's averaging, I think like the, the median is probably going to be more like low teens or mid-teens. I've, I've seen some districts where it was over forty, a couple of them over forty and a couple of them working another one now, they're at thirty-seven percent negative, forty-five percent positive. And so even though you have to your, your negatives thirty-two percent, it's a little bit higher than what we normally see, but the positives at fifty. So my takeaway was, there's really not a lot of strong opinions either way.
There's some, because a survey that gets conducted every year, it's a national survey. And schools generally poll poorly. But when you ask people about the school their child attends, that number, the positivity jumps up a lot. So I, I would expect the district to poll a little bit less well than questions about the individual schools.
Yeah, same is the true with the, do you approve of Congress, do you approve of your congressperson? Everybody likes their own congressperson, nobody. Everybody likes their own congressperson, nobody likes Congress. So.
So I think this is a lot of information. I would encourage the board to to take some more time with it. Digest it, come back and let Dr. Hannah Hosen know if you've got additional questions. I think it's really clear, we want to make sure that we have a strong steering committee that's that's not a rubber stamp, but that's actually coming forward with recommendations based on the data that we provided them with, within the the budgetary guidelines. Okay, all right.
Just a question, President Durant, this is open meeting. And will this information be open to the public so they can comment on it?
Well, we don't have a survey or anything planned to take additional information in, but this meeting is public and will be posted. So they'll they'll have the information.
So that they'll have this document that they can access and look at?
They'll be able to see it on the, yes. In the video. Yeah, everything you see on the monitor will be public information. Is that correct, Mr.?
I just want transparency through all this process.
Yes. And I just want to, in light of that, we want to be clear that this is our study to help us make decisions around, you know, what's best. This is just a starting point.
One more question. Question two, on asking the the respondents why they had a negative impression. This is sixty-eight percent not asked. Was this just kind of like a randomized question that you just asked?
That was, I was asked of the thirty-two percent with the negative opinion. So it's just to put into context the percentage of, yeah. No, wait, I didn't want to put out like a big number like fifty-five percent academics or teachers, because it looks like that's what everyone thinks it's.
This is a random sampling of the thirty-two percent, their responses.
No, that's, no, it's, everyone with a negative opinion got asked that question. So the percentages are just reflective of everyone in the poll. Because sixty-eight percent didn't get asked because they don't have a negative.
They didn't have a, understood.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
President Durant, I believe it was clear in the comments that were made, but we just want to make sure that we know our next steps are to begin developing the steering committee and putting that timeline out and bringing that information back to the board.
Absolutely. And I think you've received recommendations from the body of individuals to participate on that committee and that we are going to make sure that it's diverse and inclusive of our population. Thank you very much, Ms. Westbrook, and the board for allowing us to get our visitor out of here ahead of time. So now we'll get back on the agenda. So we're, are. I want to thank you for your presentation. She's leaving out. I'm going to continue to. Ms. Westbrook, the next topic is actually still yours around the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget discussion. So you're still up.
Thank you, President Durant, and I am getting a presentation on the screen. You all have an orange folder at your seats with a copy of the presentation and some other handouts that we'll talk through as we go through the presentation. So it is the month of May, and in the month of May, we tend to have much more information that helps our budget picture come a little bit more clearly. Okay, so this evening, we're going to look at our general fund. And we have our property value information that we'll review. We also have the TASB pay study results that we'll review and discuss the updated preliminary budget as a result of that new information that's now available. And then we'll take a look again at our federal funds with the S R two proposed expenditures as well as the S R three budget that is inclusive of our recovery plan. So starting off with the general fund, just as a reminder what the general fund is, and that's our primary operating fund. That is funded by both local property taxes as well as our state aid. That's received based on the enrollment of students within Spring ISD as well as the average daily attendance for those students. The general fund is primarily created based upon recurring costs, items that we have future obligations for. Our programs that support our strategic plan, our staff that supports our strategic plan. And eighty-five percent or more of our total general fund budget is made up of compensation items. And that salaries, stipends and and benefits. And as we've discussed over the last couple of board sessions, we're currently in a deficit in our general fund. And that is largely a result of the loss of over two thousand students due to the pandemic. As well as we began budgeting a deficit in the twenty twenty-one school year so that we could remain competitive with our teacher salaries and our other employees within the district. So as mentioned, we do have our first estimate of our property values that came in from Harris County Appraisal District. And so this is a snippet of Harris County as a whole. And you can see within the entire county, the total taxable value is five hundred and sixty-eight point six billion. But in your folders, you have a copy of Spring ISD's property values. And so as mentioned, we receive now, as a result of House Bill Three, we receive two estimates of our values. One in April, which is what you have in front of you. The next one comes in July. And then the third is our certified values, which we receive by the end of August. And we use those certified values to ultimately set the district's tax rate, which you, the board, will do that in October. So as you can see on the document that you have in front of you, the appraisal district has shown us with a property value of eighteen point six billion dollars. And so here's a look at all of the school districts across Harris County. And you can see the percent change that has occurred in the property values across the different school districts. And of course, in that second column towards the bottom, Spring ISD, we had an increase in our property values based on this first estimate of fourteen point five four percent. And of course, like I mentioned, this is the first estimate. Typically, we don't see much of a change between that first estimate and the certified values. Last year threw us a little bit for a loop. It did increase a little bit more between the April and the July. So even though fairly confident that we'll stay about where we are, it could potentially have a change that could occur between now and July.
It's been a while. We have seen increases, but it's a while since we've seen those double-digit increases. This is almost fifteen percent.
Yes.
That's a good thing.
We haven't seen double-digit increases since ExxonMobil came on the tax roll. About, I guess it's been about ten years now since that happened. So with that, with the large increase in the property values, we have our homeowners that are receiving their property value statements in the mail, and it could be a little bit alarming. As you see on page two of the document that you have with the certified estimates, residential values went up over twenty percent this year. And so Harris County Appraisal District appraises properties that are within the county's boundaries based on their value on January first of every year. And so when the economy is thriving, when things are, we're in a situation like we are right now, property values can go up upwards of twenty, twenty-five percent or even more than that. And as you can see here, they've gone up by twenty percent. However, there is a portion of the law that does limit the amount that the appraised values, which our residents are taxed on by ten percent. And that's the ten percent homestead cap that I'm mentioning here. And so that's been in the law since nineteen ninety-seven. So if the home is the the taxpayer's primary residence and it's had a homestead exemption for at least two years, though the market value can increase by any percentage, the appraised value which they're taxed on is capped at a maximum of ten percent. And so I say that to say the taxpayers pay less because of this ten percent cap that's in place. And also of note, on Saturday, on the ballot, is a potential increase in the homestead exemption from twenty-five thousand to forty thousand. And so last time we had a homestead exemption on the ballot, we were going from fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand, and it passed by eighty-six percent. So have no reason to believe that this one won't pass as well. And so if it does, then that further reduces the taxable value that our our residents are paying. So as we've seen over the last couple of years, as a result of House Bill Three, we have what's called the tax compression, where we have to calculate a maximum compress rate. And so as property values go up, the tax rate for the maintenance and operations, which supports the general fund, has to go down. And so here, just showing the two buckets, so we know our tax rate is built into two pieces. So the M and O, as I mentioned, supports general fund. And so as the funds that we collect locally through property taxes goes up, the amount that we receive from the state through state aid goes down. The INS side, interest and sinking, which is the portion of the tax rate that would support debt, which is what we were speaking of just a moment ago with the potential bond election in the future, that INS portion would support the payments on the debt for any potential bond, and of course, for the debt that we already have. So if our, if our debt service tax rate holds the same and with the compression on our maintenance and operations tax rate, bringing our maintenance and operations rate down to point eight five four six, plus that INS rate of forty-one cents, we would have a total tax rate of a dollar twenty-six forty-six, which is almost a five cent decrease. Yes, so that's a, that's a good, some good news for our property owners as well. And so one other thing I wanted to mention about the M and O tax rate is the way the tax compression works. You, based on how much your values increase, your tax rate has to decrease. And we actually hit that, I don't want to say the floor, but it kind of is the floor. So no school district can have a maintenance and operations tax rate that is less than ninety percent of the state's compression rate. And so that's where we are this year. Based on the property values, that the increase in property values, our rate should have gone lower, but we were at that ninety percent mark. So the lowest we could go is this point eight five four six.
So Ms. Westbrook, I don't want to breeze by this because this is pretty big. We're looking based on our original estimate at almost a five cent.
Decrease.
Decrease.
Yes.
In the tax.
Yes. Okay, so that's what's going on with our property values and our tax rate. So now we're going to move over into the TASB pay study. And so this is the third year that we've had TASB do an analysis of our compensation plan to see where we fare against fifteen other districts within our region, who as we know are the fifteen districts that we are competing with for teachers and for staff. And so these are the results within the teacher group. What we know is that our current staff, we've got fifty-four percent of our current teachers, librarians and nurses. So when we say teacher group, we're talking teachers, librarians and nurses. That fifty-four percent of that group have ten or fewer years of experience. However, that is a decrease from the sixty percent that had ten or fewer years of experience back in twenty twenty-one. With our new hires, as we're hiring on new teachers into the district, seventy-six percent of those teachers that are new to Spring ISD have five or less years of experience. And only twelve percent of them have more than ten years of experience at the time of hire. So even though that number is high, it's actually a decrease since last year of three percent. The one thing that we will note here that will be the discussion that we'll have over the next few slides is that Spring ISD's teacher pay is well below the market at all of the points that were compared within the pay study. So this is a chart that should look fairly familiar. This is, we've seen this over the last few years. And so I want to kind of walk you through, I have my, let's see if my pointer is my, is my pointer making it that far? Hold on. Oh, man, did you see it?
It's not going to work on the television.
It works on my computer screen. Well, but it doesn't work when, it doesn't, let's see, oh, it may work, hold on. Oh, my laser's working. Okay, ah, I got this one. This one's better, actually. Okay, so this is my little laser pointer. So if I get wild with you, just because I'm excited. Okay, so I just want to make sure that you see what's on here. So we are comparing ourselves to fifteen of our area districts, and that's what's here. And then spring, we would be the sixteenth district that's in this comparative analysis. So this first column here is the total student enrollment at each district, the total number of teachers at each district. And then we start seeing the salary information for those districts at the zero year, five year, ten, fifteen and twenty mark. And then when you get to the far right, we see the average teacher salary, the max number of years of credit. And then what's really important for the discussion we're having here is also this last column that shows last year's percent increase. And what that is, is so if you look at Galena Park, who's the first district up there. So last year, Galena Park increased their teacher salaries by three percent. And you can see Aleaf was by four percent. And all the ones that are highlighted, they increased their salaries by three percent or more. And you can see that one district, I believe it's Fort Bend, actually increased by five point nine percent last year. And so take that information and look at spring going across the bottom. And then also look at the purple, which is the twenty-fifth percentile. So the twenty-fifth percentile is this purple arrow right here. And then spring, we're the orange arrow right there between Klein and Katie ISD. The median is this blue arrow, which is right there between Umbel and Fort Bend. And then the seventy-fifth percentile is this green arrow between Goose Creek and Spring Branch. So with that information, I really want to call your attention to the median, which is the blue that's going across here. Starting with the starting teacher salary of fifty-eight thousand five hundred. So if you look at that fifty-eight thousand five hundred and then come down to this bottom row, this is how Spring ISD compares to the median salary of these fifteen districts. And so for our teachers that have zero years of experience, they're in their first year of teaching, we're at ninety, our starting salary of fifty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars is ninety-eight percent of the median. Which means that we're paying one thousand seventy-five dollars less than the average starting salary for teachers. And then look at that rank going across the bottom. So remember, spring plus those fifteen districts, it's there sixteen districts being compared. And so if you go across the bottom, at zero years, we're number twelve, at five, we're number fourteen, at ten, we're number sixteen, which means we're we're last for our ten-year teachers. At fifteen, we're number fifteen, at twenty, we're fourteen, and then at the average, we're number fifteen. All right, so when I have the pointer, pointer doesn't want to allow me to get rid of my pointer. Okay, there we go. So now this is actually an illustration of what we just saw. And so the orange on the graph is Spring ISD. And the blue is the median. And so you can see here, this gap between spring and the median, starting at zero years, you see that gap gets, it gets to the widest here at the ten-year mark. And then it starts to get a little bit closer as we go up towards the twenty-year mark. So that was all the information about the teacher pay. Now what we see here is all of the other groups of employees. So we start with our technology group. And so we can see with technology that on average, our technology employees are paid an average of three percent below market. But the range of the salary range for technology is about one percent below market. And so we keep that methodology as we go through each group. So the paraprofessionals, that is an area of employee. So the paraprofessionals, that is an area of employees that we have been working very hard to try to close that that gap and and make their pay more competitive. But you can see, just like with the teachers, the salaries for paraprofessionals have been moving faster than we've been able to keep up with over the last couple of years. So our paraprofessionals are on average paid six percent below market. Their salary ranges are actually two percent below market, but the minimum amounts, that minimum starting um value is actually aligned with the market. So and just as a note with our paraprofessionals, that's our teachers, our teacher aides, our attendance clerks, clerical aides, secretaries and assistants. The next category is auxiliary or classified. So Tasby calls them auxiliary here in spring, we tend to refer to them as classified. So that's our bus drivers, child nutrition, custodians, maintenance and our distribution services team. So on average, that group of employees is paid three percent below market. The midpoint ha- actually for their pay ranges is two percent above market. And then the minimums are as high as six percent above market. So what that's saying is, is that the pay scale itself is aligned with market. But where the individual employees are paid are not aligned with market because they're they're three percent below. Our police team, they're paid at seven percent below market on average. But again, the the midpoint range is um even with market. But then the um the range for the minimum is actually two percent above the market for our police officers. So same scenario is what what I just mentioned with the classified staff. The pay scale is is aligned, but it's where the individual um employees are placed on those scales. The next group is the administrative instructional, and this is a really large group of um staff members. So I wanted to just kind of point out who those could be. So that's your specialists, whether they're in special ed, if they're in um curriculum. Our counselors, assistant principals, associate principals, um we have directors and assistant directors, and then of course, our principals. So the administrative level positions within that group of administrative instructional are actually paid three percent above the market on average. The midpoint is five percent above the market. But then our professionals, which is more like your counselors, your specialists, that group of employees. Those positions are actually paid three percent below market, even though the pay scales are even with the market. So lots of data, lots of words, lots of bullet points. I'll just pause for just a moment before we start going into some of the recommendations. All right, guys, you have questions here?
More of a comment, I guess, than a question. So we're talking about the teacher salary plan comparisons. Even though we are towards the bottom, the twenty-fifth percentile. The differences that I'm seeing is a difference of somewhere between fifteen hundred and a four thousand dollar difference. Am I reading that correctly?
I don't think we have one quite as high as four thousand, more like a thousand to twenty-five hundred.
So statistically, we are at the bottom, but in real world dollars, we're really not that far off from our competitors.
True. Okay, so if there are any questions that I'll move into, I'm sorry.
Yes, well, I was gonna wait and hear what your recommendation, Doc, because I have some opinions about what this should look like. So I'll I'll wait and hear what you.
The thing that I find alarming is how far off we are our ten, fifteen years. Because now we've got seasoned teachers and we're at risk, we're at risk, so. That was alarming to me.
Okay, so what we've done is we actually had um a total of five models. I think we're up to about five models right now with um with Tasby. But we've brought two models forward to the board today. And we have one model that um we've requested that we should have by Tuesday that we can share. So this first one that we have here, we're referring to it as option A. And so what option A does, so again, let's acclimate ourselves to um what we have here. So you've got the pay group, that teacher group we talked about, the administrative instructional group that we just saw, who all was included. You have the pay groups and then the cost of a general pay increase. And then there's equity adjustments and pay scale adjustments and the costs associated with that. And then that far column is the total estimated cost. And so in this model, in this option A, we would move to a starting teacher salary of fifty-nine thousand five hundred. And that would require us to do a general pay increase for teachers of three point six percent. And so as we see those numbers, I wanted to bring your attention to another document that you have in your orange folders. And it looks like this. And so at the top, it says teachers, librarians, nurses. And you see the, actually, the option A is the second page. And so that's the fifty-nine thousand five hundred. And the reason I'd like for you to look at this while we're looking at this particular slide is so you can see what's happening to the median. After um this three point six percent general pay increase. So if you just look at this page and go to the far right column, and it says current market median, the value compare before and compare after. So the median right now is at fifty-eight thousand five hundred. If, so right now, we're at ninety-eight percent of the market. If we were to implement option A and give that three point six percent general pay increase, which would be a starting salary of fifty-nine thousand five hundred. The comparison to the current twenty-one, twenty-two market would be a hundred and two percent. And the significance of that is when we saw that first one and we looked at that column where you saw what other districts were doing last year, three percent, four percent, five percent. We can't just get to the current twenty-one, twenty-two market because we know that's going to move. Because everyone's doing exactly what we're doing right now. So the goal is to get somewhere between two and three percent above the current median, which should align us with um districts going into the next year. Yes, ma'am.
So this gets to sort of my concern with the way this is structured. I think this structure is inverted. And we are not rewarding our tenured T R, our teachers that have been with us the longest. Seems like the longer you work here, the lower reward you get for your loyalty. That's what this looks like to me. And so when you walk in the door, we're great for you. The longer you stay here, the less great we are until we're really not great at all. And I I I'll say this, if I were a teacher in my tenth year here, I'd be looking to go somewhere else too, based on the money. I I think we have to figure out a way to flip this around.
And to Trustee Adams' um remarks, the next model that I spoke on that we should have by Tuesday would be something that would show us. What would it look like if maybe we had a lower starting teacher salary? But we would use those funds to increase that five to ten-year mark is, which is where we see the largest difference between ourselves.
I mean, when you look at our taper reports, Dr. Inahosa. The percentage of our teachers that have been in the district or have been teaching five to ten years is typically lower than our than the folks around us. And we know that that one of the biggest correlates with high student outcomes is the tenure of the teachers. The school districts that are aid districts in this state have typically many more teachers with ten years of experience. And it's just, I just, I I and and we're making progress on that. I saw that in the last presentation where we're can, we're increasing the number of teachers that we have for longer. But like this has to be, I think, a big piece of improving that even further to get the best outcomes for the students.
And I think definitely that's part of the request um that we are asking from Tasby. And as you look at the data that um Ms. Westbrook's presented, while we're doing better um with retaining. Our teachers five to ten years, you know, we also see that. So looking forward to receiving that data from Tasby to see what that looks like. Internally, the administration, we've discussed um, you know, the steps, right? Because we've been working on first-year teachers, but what's happening to the steps along the way? So the longer you are with the district, what what happens? Looking at what we could do with adjusting those steps, as you're saying, and maybe taking the money that we are focusing here for sh- first-year teachers. Maybe decreasing that and adding some down here. And also looking at, you know, are we looking at merit pay longevity? You know, other uh districts and other states actually look at longevity. And so hopefully with the model, and I know um we requested it. And so we should have it by Tuesday and have, you know, what that would look like and what that would cost the district.
Thank you.
So the teacher pay is wanting to be different on this option and the next option. But the other categories, which we'll go over here in just a moment, they'll remain the same on option A and option B. So going to our paraprofessionals. The adjustments, and you see here, if you look at the paraprofessionals and the pay group, the general pay increase at three percent would be eight hundred and thirty-three thousand. But the adjustments column is one point four million. So the reason for that is because there's quite a bit of an overhaul to the paraprofessional pay scale. And so the minimum per hour for paraprofessionals would go up to thirteen point thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Which is a ten percent increase in the pay ranges. And so then what happens is all of the current employees would be adjusted based on their years of experience within that new pay range. And so on average, paraprofessionals would receive an eleven percent increase in their pay. Based on these changes to the pay scale and the adjustments within the pay scales. So then the next group is the auxiliary group, which is, as mentioned earlier, bus drivers, custodians, um child nutrition, that group of employees. That brings the minimum to twelve dollars an hour, which would be about an eight to ten percent increase in the pay ranges. But the average pay increase for that group would be seven percent. And I want to make note here that one of the largest groups that's included here are our bus drivers. And if you recall, we did a mid-year increase for our bus drivers that made them very competitive um with the market. And so that's why you see a little bit of a difference between that average pay increase for paraprofessionals at eleven percent versus auxiliary for seven percent. And then also, just as a a footnote, child nutrition is actually paid in a separate fund, a federal fund. But we also have a recommendation for that group of employees because we are having, we're having turnover everywhere. But we're having uh quite a bit of turnover in the child nutrition group and it and it has a lot to do with pay. And so we're proposing a six percent of midpoint increase for our child nutrition employees. And that will definitely bring them more in line with the market. And so another thing to really point out here, because this has been a point of concern for not only our paraprofessionals, but also our classified auxiliary employees. And that's where the midpoint stands. So the midpoint had inched up to twenty years. But now the way the pay ranges are set, the midpoint would be at fifteen years. So fifteen years of experience, you'd be halfway through the pay range. And that becomes extremely important when you're hiring um employees with with good experience.
So I'm I'm wondering about um. So cost of living is going up, and so we're trying to meet that. The way we're doing health insurance for our folks, are we seeing sort of a benefit in terms of compensation? Based on that, because I know that the this we're self-insuring at a lower rate than TRS would have been. And so is that adding anything for our compensation?
Well, that's a whole other story. So we are definitely um self-funded for about half of our employees right now. But we know that decision was made that we would move to a hundred percent self-funded going into the next plan year. And so currently, yes, Spring ISD self-funded plan is lower cost to our employees than TRS's plan. However, um last Friday, TRS put out their rates for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. And the governor has afforded or allowed them to have four hundred and thirty-five million dollars to offset the cost of the TRS plan. And so that has given them the ability to not only hold rates in a lot of areas, but decrease the rates. And so um we we have some thoughts about that because the intent is to to make the health insurance more affordable for our teachers. So um Dr. Inahosa and I've had lots of conversations and we we have some um thoughts that we'll share with some of our leaders in the state about that. And and we'll definitely bring some more information to the board.
So had we had that information sooner, we 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 voted based on. What we anticipated it to be without that knowledge.
That's absolutely correct, and that's some of those thoughts that we have.
I I wonder if the number of districts in the state who opted out of TRS is maybe driving.
Made them do something about it.
Yeah.
So we made a decision to get out because it the cost was so high, and now the governor's gonna subsidize their costs.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Yes, ma'am, and it is being subsidized using the these recovery funds, which is basically the coronavirus relief funds. So those dollars, even at the state level, will run out eventually as well.
Gotta love our governor.
Okay, so that's option A. So then we have option B.
Before we go, yeah, before you do that. How do you write, how did we, you mentioned that minimal midpoint change from twenty back to fifteen years. How how is that? How's that calculation come about?
From twenty to fifteen. So what they did is you just take the full range. And so if the range is from a hundred to a hundred and fifty, you're just gonna divide it by thirty and then that midpoint should land right there at fifteen years.
And the only reason I'm asking is is, to me, it feels like it's an outdated way to calculate your minimum, your mid and your your maximum. Because people don't stay in jobs the way they used to. And so it's more of a comment than a question, so.
I do not disagree.
I'll comment on that too. There's not, but I would say in all industries, they're still doing it that way. Yeah, so I mean, there's, there's a a joke in my, probably shouldn't say this, but you make more money if you needn't even come back. Because um they're still calculating that in an old mythology and people don't stay as long as they used to.
So I said, we were about to look at option B, but we're not. We're actually going to look at the cost and the impact on the preliminary budget for option A. So we have recalculated, so let me start at the very beginning in red. All numbers are subject to change. We have a lot of information available to us right now, but information is constantly becoming available. And so we adjust our projections um based on any new information that we've received. And so right now, we're looking at a total projected revenue with that change in our tax revenue based on that um April twenty-eighth estimate. The recalculation of our state revenue based on uh the change in the the estimated tax revenue. And then, of course, our local revenue and our federal revenue for general fund, we're um projecting to remain the same. So we've got a total revenue of three hundred and two point nine million. We've talked about our estimated payroll, that's our baseline cost. And then the non-payroll um cost, that forty-three point three million. So you all have a copy in your yellow, excuse me, your orange folders of the budget request. And this is one that you've seen before. But also tonight, you have that binder, it's an electronic binder where you can go and see every single line item for every single department. That um ties back to the numbers that are on the sheet. So you can see the budget and the budget request. So we won't go over that tonight, but you have it, you have it available to review. And of course, if you have any questions, let us know. So with our projected revenue and our baseline expenditures, we have a a hit to fund balance of nineteen point five million. So then we get to the additional items for consideration. And that's where our, first of all, we have some position requests. We'll look at those in detail in just a moment. But um this is the cost of what we just looked at with option A, with the teacher's starting salary of fifty-nine five. But um this is the cost of what we just looked at with option A, with the teacher's starting salary of fifty-nine, five. Paraprofessionals classified, um that the group that's getting the three percent adjustment plus the equity adjustments and then all other staff um at the two percent. And um and I do want to make, I want to make a note here while I'm on the microphone that the police, I do know they're in that two percent group, they're not in the three percent group, even though they are considered classified. So I want to say that aloud because I'm noticing it as I'm looking at it right now. And so the total additional cost would be the ten point nine million. So that would bring us to an estimated change in our fund balance of thirty point four million deficit. And so we know that for the next two fiscal years, we have the ability to use the ESER funds. They expire on September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Um but with the use of the ESER funds over the next couple of years, the net impact to the general fund fund balance would be about ten point four million. So now we'll look at option B. So the same setup, the same methodology. The difference here is that it would be a four point five percent general pay increase for teachers and the starting teacher salary would be sixty thousand. All the other items that we mentioned um would stay the same with the exception of administrative instructional. Because there is a group of employees that as teachers move, they move, like for example, your counselors. So you will notice a little difference between um option A and option B for administrative instructional, uh same as with teachers. So with this version, with option B, the impact to the preliminary budget would of course be a little bit more. And so that total would be um twelve point, actually, it's eleven point nine. But including the position request, it would be twelve point two nine. And so that would be a hit to fund balance or deficit of thirty-one point eight million. With the use of um the ESER funds, that would be a net estimated impact of eleven point eight million on general fund. Okay, and so.
So in our previous conversations, we were looking at twenty-eight million when we looked at this last month. So at the fifty-nine, five, we're looking at thirty. And at the fifty-nine, at the sixty thousand starting salary, we're up to thirty-one prior to ESER fund.
Closer to thirty-two, thirty-one point eight, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, and so if there aren't any questions on the two baseline budgets?
Well, um so the the administrative group that was three to five percent above market. Are they, are we also doing the same two percent increase for those folks?
Yes. It would be a two percent um general pay increase, which means the general pay increase is based on the control point. So we would look at their pay range. And so whatever that control point, that midpoint is for that particular pay range, it would be two percent of that. So to your point, it could be less than two percent for those individuals, depending on what the midpoint is, or it could be more than two percent.
Oh, I see, I see. You don't know until after you do it.
Yes.
I got you, okay.
Okay, so with that, I wanted to show the position requests that are listed here, and there's four positions that are included in that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar request. The first one is for our dyslexia and five oh four group. And they are requesting a full-time assessor, a bilingual full-time assessor to assist with um testing our students to see if they're eligible for um dyslexia services.
So these are departmental requests for additional FTEs.
Yes, ma'am, and there's a total of four. So the multilingual department is requesting a compliance specialist. And so um one thing to note, and so let me say this first. Research and Accountability is um requesting a coordinator of of CTE, but specific for CCMR, which is that college career and military readiness. And so those top three positions are all funding generating populations of students. So our dyslexia, based on House Bill three, we receive funding um for our additional weighted funding for our dyslexic students, our emergent bilingual students and that CCMR. So all three of those positions would give the ability to ensure the number one, the coding is clear, the compliance is met. And it they very well, if all things align the way that it's intended, should help ensure that our funding is what it should be and possibly in- increase it if it's not where it should be. So and then the fourth position is um our technology department that's requesting a cybersecurity position, and the position would be it's an engineering.
Senior Security Operations Engineer.
Thank you. So the total cost of those um proposed requested positions is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So is this inclusive of all requests we received or just the requests you're bringing forward?
Just the requests that we're bringing forward. We did receive some additional requests.
Can we see those?
From department? You want to see those on Tuesday evening?
Yes, please.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Uh is that, is that just me or everybody want to see? Okay, thank you.
I think the total is about a million altogether. Okay, so then that's general fund. If there are no questions, then we're going to move into the federal funds.
Before you do, I I I'm having a hard time focusing, so I need to make a comment around TRS and our benefits.
Yes.
Because as a board, TRS gave us a deadline in which to make a decision. We made a decision based on the facts we had at that time that we felt was best for our staff here in Spring ISD, to give them some relief around the cost of their benefits. After that deadline and after our vote and that decision that we've made, they are now coming forward and changing what that cost is going to be based on supplemental funds from the governor. Okay, so that that gives me a little bit of heartburn because we made what we felt was the best decision that may now appear to people down the road that we didn't help to reduce their costs as much as we could have, and that's disturbing to me. I know you all said you all were looking at writing some letters and voicing that. I'd like to ask our governance committee to follow suit in um sharing our feelings behind that with our legislators.
Thank you.
I have a quick question before you move um for position request. Who, when it comes to compliance, who's currently um responsible for that?
So on the compliance, whether it's the multilingual, the CTE or the dyslexia, they uh monitor their own. And then, of course, um at the campus level, we have um people that monitor their own compliance. But centrally, currently, we have one person that is currently monitoring all forty schools. Um and that's why the need for an additional staff member. Um with CTE, we don't necessarily have a compliance person. All of our specialists are supporting that work. And then dyslexia, we have one and point five. So one and a half persons, people that are currently assessing our students for dyslexia and why the need for the additional ones, specifically hiring someone that's bilingual.
Yes, thank you. I I want to clarify my ask. When I ask to, when I ask to see. So we do a zero day-based budget and then each department will come forward with if they need additional staffing. And they recommended that to the district and then the district presents to us in 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 their opinion, what they think is best and most appropriate to stay within our budget. I want to see the full list of what was asked for. So that um we can make sure we're making the good decisions and if we need to adjust something somewhere else, so.
So my que- my question is, does that information include the justification for the position?
Oh.
That's what I'm.
Can you include that in it? Absolutely.
Yes, we have a document that before any position request is submitted, they do s- um have to submit a justification um on the need and um the support that they will provide students and schools. Okay, so now we're moving to um ESER two and ESER three. And so just a quick reminder, ESER two, the grant period ends September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Which means we have the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to fully utilize those funds. And as is always the case, when we have grand grant funds, we will not leave any funds on the table. So the purpose of the ESER funds, both ESER two and ESER three are to address the impact of COVID nineteen and particularly um the impact on learning loss and returning our students to normal. With ESER two, a portion of those funds were used to partially offset the ADA Hold Harmless that was provided by the state back in twenty twenty-one. So in twenty twenty-one, they reduced our total revenue in general fund by a specific amount that was um to hold us harmless, but it was, the cost was picked up using our ESER two funds. So we took the hit to revenue in twenty twenty-one, but we'll actually um utilize those funds in ESER two by relieving general fund um in twenty-one, twenty-two. So you'll see that on the next slide. Both the ESER two and ESER three allows supplanting of general fund. And supplanting is what we just looked at on that preliminary budget where we said twenty million dollars will be offset by ESER. That allows us to take general fund costs and pay for them out of um the ESER funds. The really important thing to note here is that the ESER dollars are non-recurring, one time, short term, when they're gone, they're gone. Um with ESER three, we recall that we we were required to have a a minimum of twenty percent of the funds for ESER three set aside to address learning loss. We did a calculation of the total cost that we had spent to date using our ESER three dollars and forty-seven percent of those dollars have been specific to addressing learning loss for our students. So we're in line there. And so as mentioned earlier, ESER three is a part of that um recovery plan that we presented to the board last year. So here, this is new information, ESER two. We have a proposed budget for ESER two. And so the total amount that's available for ESER two is forty-five point two million. The first line item we have there is proximity learning, and we know proximity learning is the company that is allowing us to have virtual teachers um teaching our students at various campuses. And the total cost for that is one point two million. We're, we've used it in twenty-one, twenty-two, and then we're um planning to use that company and that those services again in twenty-two, twenty-three. So that's the one point two million. The supplanting of general fund is that five point five million, which I mentioned earlier, that's allowable. And particularly in this case, because our revenue was decreased in general fund in twenty twenty-one. The retention and recruitment stipends that we brought forward um last month, which we'll talk about a little bit more um on the the next couple of slides, they're included here as well. Now, a new ask to a couple of new ask here is um five million dollars for investments in our performing and visual arts program. And we know our performing and visual arts program is stellar. They're um nationally recognized, um amazing group of students and and an organization as a whole. But we do have a lot of costs that over the years of deficits that we haven't been able to address. And so we're we're requesting to spend five million dollars, which is allowable within these ESER funds to invest in some of those um delayed upgrades for performing and visual arts. The next item, which I won't spend a lot of time on because Dr. Parasol is actually going to do a complete um presentation, is Momentum High School. And so the cost associated with the construction to um create that program and um some dominoes, which again, Dr. Parasol will talk more about, is fifteen million dollars. Now, what's really important to note here is that TEA has to give prior approval before any construction cost can be paid using ESER dollars. So we've submitted a request to TEA, but we haven't received a response yet, so that's tentative. And then, of course, if we make those make those um changes and are able to open Momentum High School, then um there would be some materials and equipment costs associated with that, and that's the one point five million. So if all these um items are taken into consideration, we would fully maximize those ESER two dollars that are available.
Oh, I know we have a timeline of when we have to use the funds. Um but are we able to use the funds in future projects? For example, the proximity learning, if we were to pay ahead with like a multi-year contract within this timeframe, even though the funds are being used ahead of time?
So what what they allow is, of course, we can't obligate the funds beyond the grant period. So starting um last year, we actually did some three-year grants, something that grants some three-year um contracts because the grant for ESER three was three years, so you just can't obligate beyond, um yes. Now, one thing about the ESER funds and and we talk about residual funds because sometimes there are savings, even if you allocate the positions, if you don't fill all the positions, there's residual funds. We're able to supplant with general fund and any of that savings you're freeing up dollars in general fund. Then we would commit at the board level those dollars, and that would allow us within general fund to use those residual dollars going forward. And we wouldn't have that restriction. So as we get closer to closing out these funds, we will most definitely have that discussion with the, that's it.
When it comes to um the investments in the uh visual and performing arts, what type of upgrades are we talking about?
Um they actually had a list of twelve point four million dollars worth of upgrades, but it was things such as instruments. Um the PAC center up updates and upgrades and things like that. Um if you go to performances at some of our campuses, you'll hear maybe the sound system doesn't quite sound as good as it needs to. It's those type of investments that we would need to make.
Got you.
Ms. Westwicks, do we have any idea when we might hear from TEA on our application for momentum?
Uh not at the moment, the initial, because we, I will just, full transparency, we submitted it originally and and it was returned um requesting more information. It was denied, actually, but requesting more information. So we updated it and we sent it back to them. The first time, it only took about a week, but it's already been about a week or two now. So we'll probably follow up with them early next week to see where we are.
So I'm wondering if if that the application is ultimately denied, whether that's something we could fold into our bond.
It's absolutely something we could.
Can we reserve this conversation for after Dr. Hena Hosen's presentation on momentum? Because the rest of the board doesn't know what we're talking about.
Okay.
I have just another general question, not about momentum. Um so I know that we can't obligate beyond the time period and we can supplant funds. Is there any restrictions to investing any of this money to grow or some workaround in that respect?
You mean investing as far as if the money's sitting there and it's getting interest income investing? Oh, not really, because um with any federal fund, general fund actually pays it first and we get reimbursed. So there there's no funding that's like sitting in a bank account earning interest. Okay. So then I'll move on to ESER three, which we've seen many times before. And so this is a part of the recovery framework that has been presented to the board and is sitting on our website for everyone um to be able to review. The two things I did want to point out, number one is last time when you saw ESER three, there were about five hundred and ninety thousand dollars that were available. And so what we did is is that if we are to move forward with option A or option B, those positions that we currently have funded would cost us more. So we adjusted um that total cost upwards for what those position would cost us going into next year. But then, if you look at the very bottom two items, those are new. And so there's a remote recruiter that we would have a position over the next two years that would assist us with recruiting um teachers and staff members, but they would work remotely for the district but not in the district. And then the last program is a grow your own. And then the last program is a Grow Your Own program. And so Dr. Hina Hosa had brought forward the T-Class Grant a few months ago, and a portion of the T-Class Grant is for the Grow Your Own program that allows us to have our paraprofessionals that are degree, but would like to become a teacher to, we would pay for them to become certified teachers. But that program only allowed us to have six individuals in the program. So what this does is it expands it to about 30. We would be able to add 30 additional over two years, yes. So those are the changes since the last time you saw the ESER three budget. Did you have a question? No? Okay. So the last item that I have is the retention and recruitment proposal, an update to what we proposed last month. And so this is, first off, last month, we brought forward a plan that would have all current teachers would receive upon returning to Spring ISD for the 2223 school year, they would receive a retention stipend of $2,000. What we're requesting here is that we extend that retention stipend to all employees. And that is critical because we are seeing quite a bit of turnover across the board, not, not just with our teachers. And so for those employees that return, because it's all about retention, they return with us in 2023, then the first installment would be paid to them in the amount of $1,000 on August 10th. However, if we fail to retain them and they leave before December 2nd, we would take it back. The second payment would be on January 10th and the same is true there that if, so if they stay till December 2nd, they've earned that first $1,000. But if they get the payment on January 10th, that $1,000 and they leave before spring break, which is March 13th, we would take it back as well. Because again, the purpose of the funds are to retain our employees. So that's a request that is new from last month, and that's to include all employees, not just our teachers. So then the next change here, and you can see our recruitment flyer that we created based on the last time that we brought forth the recruitment and retention proposal that Dr. Hill presented to everyone. And one of the guidance points that we got from our board was to ensure that these were attainable. Could the teachers actually meet the requirements and receive the, the additional stipend? So as you can see here, a teacher could receive an additional, up to an additional $5,000 based on their performance on the STAR EOC. And so originally, we had it listed at 70% meets and 80% growth. And so what we're proposing now, because that proposal would bring less than 100 teachers, less than 100 teachers would be able to actually receive those funds. So what we're proposing now is that we change that to 50% or more in growth or 50% or more in meets or higher. And so that would allow us to have about 368 teachers that would qualify, which is a larger percentage of our total number of teachers. Still, it's still some elite, it's elite to that. So not all teachers would necessarily qualify, would still be our higher performing teachers, but it allows more teachers to qualify.
Just a couple of comments, that was, I believe, a, a question that came from Trustee Carrera about how many would be impacted or qualify. And so I like making the adjustments so that more teachers would receive that. I did want to back up, he asked me if I had a question on, these pages aren't numbered, on the ESER three, year two. And I did want to mention about the Grow Your Own program. I'm really excited about that. I know we were able to do, was it eight teachers or eight paraprofessionals? Six. With the grant money that we had, we were able to pay for six of them to get certified to become teachers. And so this Grow Your Own program gives us an opportunity to add more to that program. And I do know, I know I spoke with Dr. Hina Hosa, we've identified the potential for that. And was it 40 qualified?
Yes, there were about 45 paraprofessionals that have a degree that would qualify.
Okay. So if they were interested in becoming certified teachers, we would support that funding so that they could achieve that. Think that's exciting. I think that's a, a small investment to have our own. We've got, these are paraprofessionals that are already on our campus, knows our kids, know the spring environment. And it's, to me, no better way to invest in them and giving them that opportunity. So what I wanted to ask, was this 123,000? How many of those 40 would we be able to support with that amount?
And we are actually meeting, this is a partnership with Harris County Department of Ed. And so we have a meeting to really hash that out this coming week. And so we're looking to be able to, and I stand corrected, there's 51 eligible paraprofessionals out in the field that already have a bachelor's degree and are working in our buildings right now. And so we do want to, you know, host an interest meeting for them and then also meeting with Harris County Department of Ed. We'd like to be able to do 30, 15, and 15. But we also have to work with HCD to see their capacity. Because this is a brand new program that not only ensures the certification of our paraprofessionals, but also supports them throughout. And we also want to be able to give them a day during the week that they would come and have classes here. So they're not having to do it most. Alternative certification programs are done on Saturdays and at night. And so we want to be actually able to have the paraprofessionals have one day during their workday to, to do their classes and work with their professors. So we'll have much more information and then, of course, you know, an MOU that will be coming to you for approval. But we're really excited because as Mr. Ant has said, these are paraprofessionals that live in our community, that have been working with us, that have a degree, that are committed to our children. They just need the extra support to become certified.
Before we move on, I just want to say thank you for making those adjustments. I'm all about trying to stretch people, but you know, you don't want to discourage by making things so far out of reach. So thank you for making that adjustment. But I did also have a question. This proposal, are these numbers included in the option A or B that we were talking about earlier?
Not these numbers, these numbers are included in the ESER two budget right here, the retention stipends and the teacher recruitment and retention. And so we're budgeting based on kind of maximum. But if we don't spend those dollars, then at some point throughout the year, we would come back with another proposal to make sure that we can still put those dollars towards retention and recruitment throughout next year.
Is this, is this a true assessment? So if we're looking at giving across the board the $2,000, right? Where we know we're already below based on our equity study we just did. And as trustee Carrera even pointed out earlier, even though it says a certain percentage, it's really probably around 1 to $2,000, where our salary's off. So this really, even though it's one time, it doesn't get them ongoing. This really kind of brings them to parity right away. Is that a true statement?
It's a true statement in that that's the amount that they'll receive on their W two for that year. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do we still need to fix it down the road?
Yes, this helps for now, because it wouldn't be in their base pay going forward. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And so then the last thing here is just next steps. So the numbers we saw, the deficit that we, that we are looking at for next year, if the board so chooses to move forward with that, knowing that we do have some ESER funds over the next couple of years, we would still need to begin immediately after passing the 2223 budget, developing a strategy to make sure that we balance our future budgets. And so as we've talked in the past, that's twofold. It's having a robust plan in place to make sure that we can get our students back that we've lost. We had some discussions about the fact that we have over 3,500 students that live within Spring ISD boundaries that are choosing not to attend our schools. So we certainly have that opportunity, but also exploring opportunities to decrease our expenditures while at the same time being strategic. Like all of it is just about being strategic and making sure that we remain fiscally sound. And so that means how do we strategically use our fund balance? How do we ensure that we use all of the ESER dollars and anything that's residual? If we move it in to make sure that it works to, to our benefit going forward? Just don't want to lose sight, it's exciting, we want to be competitive. We know we need to get our teachers aligned with the market so that we can get to the next level of student achievement, but we also need to be very mindful of remaining fiscally sound. And so I just want to make sure that we end on that note. We do tentatively have a meeting set for June 2nd. And so based on the discussions tonight and then again on Tuesday, bringing that information back, we'll be able to decide what needs to happen between now and the budget adoption on June 14th. That's all I have, Madam President, unless there are any additional questions.
I just wanted to reiterate what Ms. Westbrook said. And we definitely want to be competitive. We definitely, I think, one of the most important charges that we heard tonight is to make sure that we look at a model that will support our teachers that are within the five to 10-year range that, you know, have stayed with us because we do know that that's where we're getting high performance from our students. So that's really important for us. I just want to reiterate once again that for us, we must start looking forward. And you saw how we're taking $20 million from ESER funds this year and we would take another $20 million next year. There would be a hit to our fund balance anywhere from 10 to 12 million dollars. And so as we look at salaries, that is reoccurring cost or as we look at adding new positions here, that again is reoccurring cost. So we want to definitely remain competitive. We value our teachers, our paraprofessionals. I believe the proposals that you have here, you know, are a start. We'll have that third proposal that will, you know, really focus on our solid teachers. I like to call them, you know, those true tried teachers. But after year three, you start getting a little bit better. By the time you're five years, you start, you know, really humming along. And so those are the teachers we definitely need to address. But I want all of us to remain cognizant that we need to start getting in line so that we're not hitting fund balance anywhere from 10 to 12 million dollars with the proposals we have here. And then for our senior leadership and our administration that's here, you know, our big task is to increase our enrollment. We must be able to recapture anywhere from 2,000 to 3,000 students in order not to hit fund balance and in order to right sizes. And then for our parents that are here with us, attendance matters. And so for us, it's so important. This budget that we are looking at will not in any way negatively impact our schools. All the cuts have been done centrally, but it is really our parents supporting us and making sure that our students are coming to school so that we can remain, you know, innovative and competitive. Just felt that we needed to know that as we go through and continue this discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Hina Hosa. Ms. Harjus, did you have a question?
Well, I'm just looking at the non-salary budget request. Will we get the breakdown that we request? Is that going to be a part of the breakdown that we requested as well?
You have it, it's a part of your budget packet. It's not printed because it's huge, but you have it electronically.
Okay.
It's, yes, you have it electronically. It's a, and you can see every line item for each budget.
I do want to come back to what Ms. Westbrook's wrapped up with. We do have a meeting on the tentatively scheduled for June 2nd, but we must pass our budget at the meeting on June 14th. So I, I want to just pause for a minute. Are you ready? Are we comfortable with where we're going? That everyone has all the information they need in addition to the additional information we're going to get on Tuesday? And feel confident that we're, we have what you need to, to make a decision on that vote? Any, any alarms, anyone at risk? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovation, Dr. Matthew Parasol.
Thank you, President Durant. This presentation can be found on page 35 of your packet. I'm excited to share a new school of choice that we, administration is proposing that would begin for next school year named Momentum High School. And as the logo implies, focused on helping our students gain the momentum that opens up the world of opportunities for them. Momentum High School is tied directly to our strategic plan, really looking at excellent equitable outcomes to meet every student's needs. Additionally, it is aligned to all six of our strategic priorities. I'm specifically focusing also on opportunities. The purpose and the mission of Momentum High School is to create a path for graduation that is accelerated, that provides flexible schedules and blended instruction to our students. We have many students that have not been engaged in the traditional school environment. I think with COVID, we have seen that even more as some students have really blossomed with virtual opportunities. Other students have, have been challenged with, you know, adjustments to waking up early or having other jobs. And this would provide opportunity for these students to choose to say, you know what? I, this is, I want an accelerated path. I want to move into the job force quicker. I want to be able to move to that next stage in, in my life. And so it would provide an accelerated path to recover coursework as well as reach their graduation. It is truly designed around a whole child approach with flexible scheduling, with teacher mentoring approach where there's a, a small class size that would allow for those relationships to develop between the teacher and the student and, and as they reach those after high school goals and, and graduate. Additionally, there would be some robust counseling, offering different supports that students might need as they work through the academic piece, which would be individualized to each of their plans. Not only would it, would it include credit recovery, but initial credit, dual credit, as well as AP course options available at the school. With engaging instruction really tied to that real-world application to say, how do we connect this learning to what students want to do after school? All the services that we provide in a traditional high school would also be included, such as special education and services for our emergent bilinguals. In addition, the college and career-ready component would be a key piece with students having multiple opportunities to still take career pathways and earn endorsements and as well as their industry certifications. So when they leave Momentum, they can go directly into the workforce. There would be partnerships that we're working on now with Lone Star College for accelerated courses as well as internship opportunities that would be partnered with our CTE program tied directly to our students' career goals as well as support services and helping develop internships and career job placement assistance for these students. The student profile that we're looking at is for students that are two years or more beyond their cohort. And so they would be eligible to apply. And the great thing, as we had just talked about, is that sometimes the, the attendance issue, this focus, this program would help bring in some of those students that may have that challenge with the traditional school or they may not be attending school at all. And so we would be able to bring those back into our school district and then help them reach their goals for graduation. Even though it's called Momentum High School, it's really designed around starting at sixth grade with that eye on graduation. So serving our students from sixth through eighth as well as ninth through twelve. For our high school students, it would focus on identifying the students who have zero to five year, or zero to five credits and helping close those gaps if they are beyond their age cohort by two or more years. And to ensure that they're not experiencing predictive failure as we have seen in so many schools across the country. The instructional framework would be much like they would experience in our high schools, focused on that whole child approach with scaffolded instruction, collaborative group work, reading, literacy, classroom conversations, and questioning all part of the daily instruction that occurs. Students would be able to graduate either on the foundation plan or the foundation with endorsement. With our goal of ensuring every student does reach endorsement as well as industry-based certification. This school would also encompass two of the programs that we currently have, which is our ASAP program, which provides flexible scheduling available online and through blended instruction for students, as well as our virtual school program, which is utilized by students on campuses as they sign on, as well as this new blended learning approach, which would be new for next school year. The program's schedule would offer, like we talked about, that flexibility. There would be the option for a morning program if that appealed to the student, or afternoon, or evening. Multiple options designed around students' individual needs. Additionally, the blended full-day model would incorporate four days a week of accelerated instruction where students would be able to get a year's worth of credit in a single semester course. As well as one day per week where they would be focused on college and career experiences, really going to a local university in our area, having that college experience and gaining those job skills and certifications. The logistics and the experience that our students will have is much like any other high school. Transportation would be provided to them from their neighborhood bus stop. Food service would be provided at all, each of the models that was presented. And all of the staff would be high-qualified, highly qualified teachers, and this would not change. Also, student progress would continue the same as we share with our parents through progress reports, report cards, just like every other high school in our district. And so as we see that this need even more in our current time, this work actually was the brainchild of Dr. Hanhosa. As she met with our principals, our teachers, our students, and our parents, so many of our community sharing, what can we do to help provide and close these gaps and provide our opportunity for our students who are ready to graduate, who want to move on and move into the career world? So we would launch this next school year, we would finalize the plans in May. As we developed that implementation, we'd secure the resources, as Ms. Westbrook shared a little bit earlier. And we would begin targeted enrollment and marketing. So this would be a school of choice, students would apply, and we would choose from those just like we would with any other school of choice. And then we would launch in, be preparing to launch June and July with a full launch in August and the new school year. Lots of work would happen over the summer with professional development for our staff, site preparation, parent meeting scheduling, and finalizing with ongoing support throughout the school year. The location for year one, the recommendation is Southridge Campus. At Southridge, we currently have our ASAP and Virtual program, but there is room for expansion. And so for year one, our enrollment goal would be a hundred and fifty students. With expansion the following year for twenty-three, twenty-four, to move to our TC Gester campus location where Spring Leadership Academy is currently housed. That would allow us to increase enrollment by another hundred and fifty percent and enroll three hundred and seventy-five students. We, one of the focuses that the board has challenged us with is increasing the number of high-quality seats that we have for our students. And we know that Spring Leadership Academy has already done a great job of that, but they are at capacity. And so looking at a space for them. And so as Momentum comes into existence, there are a few shifts that would be recommended to make that happen. The first that I would like to talk about is Clark Primary. Currently, we have Clark Primary and Clark Intermediate as separate campuses. There's been a lot of work done this year by Ms. Fisher and Ms. Gomez to really help those two campuses come together and view themselves as one campus. Additionally, we've heard from you as well as parents about the challenges when students transition from one school to another. And so by bringing together our two ADSY schools into one campus building at Clark Intermediate, that would help reduce the transitions, and it would also help with that one team focus that they have been working on. This would open up Clark Primary that has not been fully utilized with enrollment, and we'd be able to start construction for a new Spring Leadership Academy that would then allow Spring Leadership to more than double its size as well. With the move of Spring Leadership to start in twenty-three, twenty-four, and for Momentum to also begin at that TC Gester location that year. All of this supporting our North Star vision as well as our Spring ISD Portrait of a Graduate to help our students compete and lead in today's global society. Are there any questions?
Dr. Hanhosa, can you talk a little bit about your vision?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Durant. And this campus, I think, is a long time coming for our students. It would be truly expanding what we have right now at ASAP and the Virtual to include our students that have that desire to be able to graduate from Spring ISD. However, due to circumstances that ultimately, many times are beyond their control, our high school students are lacking credits or our high school students have been called up to become that breadwinner for their families. And so this would allow it to be a school of choice, of course, for students to be able to apply, and also for our counselors as they're advising the students that may be sixteen years old with five credits and not seeing a way to catch up. Or having a fifteen-year-old that's in middle school and seeing all doors closing for them. Momentum would be that place where they could accelerate their learning, where they would be in a place that is very supportive in a small environment with three hundred and seventy-five students, supported by the teachers, counselors, social workers, that would ensure that we, you know, shepherd them through graduation. And then the most important piece is that partnership with Lone Star to be able to have the students have that opportunity to start working on their future careers. Those CTE courses that we could bus our students to Lone Star and start earning those certifications so they'll be able to not only graduate from high school but have certifications in areas that they could, can start working immediately after high school. And you've heard from Basilees, you know, one of the things that our community is looking towards is, are we preparing? We have the Portrait of the High School Graduate here. You know, we're preparing students to be successful in the community, right? And so for some of our students, there we, the expectation when we designed this with input from our parents, from our students, from our teachers, and from you all, was to have a graduate that's ready to contribute and compete in today's society. Some of our students are ready to go into that four-year college. Others are ready and have to enter the workforce. And so this place would be that place that will allow them the opportunity to graduate. For us, and I'm very passionate about our students that right now are struggling and are not coming to school and see all doors close for them. As we visit, as you all have accompanied us in those success walks, you hear from our students those tough decisions that they have to make when they have to work. Or when they are now sitting and they're eighteen years old and sitting with ninth graders, you know, that totally, you know, destroys their self-confidence and believe in this campus to be able to ensure that all students, not just some students, but that all students have the opportunity to graduate and be, you know, able to contribute to our community and our society.
So this to me is an exemplar of an equitable program. This is serving kids that frequently get kind of left behind in our current system. And so I really like this. I guess I have some broader questions about like how we're funding it and whether we'll be able to get permission from TEA to do the facilities upgrades that we need to do. Because if we're not going to get that, I'd like to know if we have a plan to still go forward anyway and just, you know, do the best we can. But I believe we need this for our families in spring, so.
I totally believe that the state will approve this. I've seen other construction approvals that, you know, I don't want to say that ours has merit, but ours has merit. And, you know, it is something that, right now, just shifting what we are doing ASAP has served its purpose. Remember, we started ASAP, you know, first year here, and so we've been able to recapture students that would not have graduated. We've been able to recapture lots of credits, but there is still more that we can do. So year one, implementing this model and really challenging our teachers to do more for our kids. We would still continue with the waiver that we submit every year, allowing the school district to get full funding while the students attend a four-hour day with those flex schedules. That will still happen, you know, immediately regardless. And if needed, if by any chance that, you know, the funding does not come through, we could actually look at, you know, are there any funds available in residual funds? Are there any ability for us to include it in the bond? The other group that's so critical for us is, Dr. Parasol talked about our Spring Leadership Academy, which was the vision of our community and this board. And right now, they're at capacity, right? They're only able to serve about three seventy-five, three eighty. We put four hundred kids in there and it's so crowded. And so many parents at middle school are looking for options for their little ones. By moving that program to the other campus, we could actually build it out with the building as it exists just with upgrades for six hundred students to be able to take that opportunity to attend Spring Leadership Academy. So it would, you know, provide opportunities for both student populations.
I have always thought the ASAP program was just absolutely a jewel of our programs to fit the students' schedules who have to work and help their families. What I love is that it has those students, but it also has the students who want to accelerate. I would have given anything for this when I went to high school. I really finished high school in three years, but I couldn't take English four during the summer. And, well, I won't go into my history, but there are, and I've seen kids at graduation who have done it in less time. There's a lot of kids out there who really want to get done through high school, and I completely sympathize with that. I was interested in the accelerated Lone Star College courses that are going to be a part of this. Is this only going to be available to the Momentum High School or could other high school students use it? Because I know some high school students who would like to do this right now.
Yes, and so it would be available to both. So Momentum itself would be its own school of alternative accountability, however, there would, with students attending there. But there would also be the opportunity for students at any of our comprehensive schools to attend the program as well as the virtual, through the Texas Virtual School.
Just one more thing, I think I've always been worried about the Clark schools having that move because I have seen too many years' data, solid data everywhere, that each time you move into another building, there is a learning loss. And, you know, if you want to argue with it, I got the data for you, okay, we'll do it. And, but, you know, I don't run the school district. I just have certain things I do here. So for, to see these, what you're doing here with the Clarks, I bet you're going to see, this is going to be a win-win on that. The only sad thing for me is SLA, which I do have a grandson in. It has been a wonderful small school with everybody knows everybody. And I thought, oh, that was one of the best things about middle school is that you're in a smaller group. But I, you know, I realized that for efficiencies and so on, that we need to probably amp up that program. But it has just been a wonderful school. I can't tell you.
I think this is a very needed program for spring. I would like to ask, if you have not already, to look at Aldine's program like this called Hall Academy. They've had it for years. Their most popular class is the four-thirty class in the evening, the night class. I think they were impressed, surprised when they first started it, that there was such a need for students to be able to go to school after they had completed work from seven to three and then be able to go on to school in the evening from four-thirty-eight. So if you haven't looked at Hall and Aldine ISD, it's a very needed program.
So I was going to ask if there were other programs, so you just answered that for me, so thank you. Oh, well, trustee McDaniel?
Yes, so for the whole child approach, I'm just curious, when it mentions the teacher-mentor approach, how does that look different from, or how do we envision that looking different from a traditional classroom?
And so one of the great benefits is the smaller class sizes, building that relationship with the student, knowing those students' goals and needs. And so very similar to how our ASAP program works now, where teachers truly are checking in with the kids, there is, there's a, because of that type of environment, and as you're working together for those small wins, as each class is taken, you know, completed, that relationship is there. And so that mentor, teacher-mentor component would be a key part of the program as well, it would continue.
So I, two things, I love, love, love the idea. I love how it envelops the ASAP program, I love all of the components to it. So I, into Dr. Jensen's point, if I would have had this option, I would have flown through high school too. So I love that. But on the flip side, what, what is this doing? What, if anything, does this do to our budget? Like, where are the budget constraints going forward for the program? And then my second question is from the teacher perspective. I know I'm always asking the same question, what else are we adding to our teachers? Are these going to be new positions that we're opening up? Or are we shifting personnel and are we finding these people? It's kind of my other question.
And so, yes, as some students would, you know, from their zone campuses, would it move into the program? We would be able to adjust staffing for those, as well as we may, we expect to also bring back students who are not currently enrolled. And so that will also create for us additional dollars to help fund those positions.
I think the second part of that question, did it get answered around how that impacts the load we're putting on teachers?
And so as we discussed, this, many of these students that our profile is really about students who are not engaged. Oftentimes, we have seen that when the students aren't engaged, that can bring into accountable behavior. Um, oftentimes, we have seen that when the students aren't engaged, that can bring into accountable behavioral challenges, um, defiance of wanting to complete assignments, um, those type of situations, which once the student has an engagement in a small, uh, you know, class accelerated that's designed for them, those, those behavioral issues, um, will go away. Also, what that does is it provides relief to, um, the original campus where the student didn't have that active engagement, I mean, it wasn't the right fit for them. And so with that, it does provide support to both schools, to the teacher, um, where they have had that challenge with it waking up at six-thirty in the morning to come to school was not, was not for them. And as to your point, that night school is, um, and so that that does alleviate some of those numbers from, um, that home campus as well as help with with those students that it's not the right fit for them in the program, the traditional high school.
Now, I would also expect that there is a particular type of teacher that will be attracted to this kind of campus. In H C D B, we have, uh, four specialized campuses, one for students. Um, it's similar to the, to a D A E P, but we also have a drug recovery program. And those te, those students and those teachers form really close relationships. It's a much smaller, more intimate working group of of students that that I think, in my mind, this kind of looks like what Fortis would look like.
Okay, so this is really exciting. So at this point, we've been going since six o'clock. But we also not quite have, maybe a little over halfway through our agenda. So I I want to give us a break, but I would like for us to take just a short five-minute break. Um, if everybody can kind of come back in five minutes, uh, so we can keep it going, so we aren't here too late, but uh, we have been going for quite some time, so. And take a five-minute break, so it's now eight fifty-eight, let's, or maybe seven, let's start at five after. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and reconvene us here. Um, I want to again thank Dr. Parisol for, uh, that update on Momentum High School. And our next item will be, I'd like to recognize our chief of schools, Dr. Michael Perez, Miguel Perez.
Thank you so much, President Durant. We have Dr. Collins and Dr. Thomas here today. They're going to provide all of us a presentation on social emotional learning. It's gonna be an update. And I'm super excited because this is gonna be a joint collaboration. Uh, and, uh, we have, uh, the president of Seven Mindsits here today. I'm not gonna give all the presentation away, but we met today and we're very excited about the partnership. And we're working on trying to scale some different, uh, uh, supports for parents so that we can continue to support the students, the staff, and now the parents. The materials are both in English and Spanish. And without further ado, I'm gonna allow Dr. Collins, uh, to enlighten us with the update, please.
Thank you, Dr. Perez. Good evening, President Durant, members of the board, Dr. Hannah Hossa and cabinet members. And this evening, I will be providing you an update, uh, from the mental health department and on mental health in the district. Our district's leadership definition really drives the work that we're doing. The outcome-driven, service-oriented, and relationship-centered leads to our dedication to the mental health and wellness of our students. Uh, we promote a well-being, the well-being of students and of staff as we're focusing on just their safety, their social-emotional needs. And we know that students who are emotionally and mentally well and feel safe at school will have a positive student outcome. The mental health update will include a department overview, discuss mental health, the implications of medication on mental health and behavioral concerns in social-emotional learning, our different partnerships, our programs, and our departmental next steps. Now, let's look at mental health and how we define mental health. So mental health refers to a person's state of mental, um, emotional well-being. As we all are aware, the pandemic took a major toll on the mental health of our students and our staff. Um, childhood and adolescence are just those critical stages of life for mental health. And so this is the time where the rapid growth in the brain is taking place. And so research has shown that the causes of mental health, mental health problems are developed in the brain. Um, because we know that good mental health is truly part of our overall well-being, we also need to recognize, um, that bad mental health, such as stress and anxiety and depression, can all lead to poor mental health. And as you can see in the graphic, we have how, um, early prevention and intervention and stress and anxiety all impact the the brain and the brain development. So just as we have to be concerned and take measures to ensure that we have good physical health, we must do the same for our mental health. Um, research has stated that anywhere between thirteen to twenty percent of our U S students experience clinical mental health disorders, and that's very alarming. And so as we're thinking about providing that support for our students, our mental, mental health is a tier-two and tier-three intervention for our more specific and targeted mental health concerns. The data that you see here is based on counselor visits. Um, we track and log any time our students and counselors meet, and we gather this information on a monthly basis. With Senate Bill eleven, um, the Texas Education Agency just truly mandates that there's required training, um, to identify and report mental health, um, any kind of mental health concerns that we have with our students. But it also mandates that we track and monitor threat assessments, uh, which includes suicidal ideation, homicidal ideation. Um, and so our, our high, as you see on the, on the graphic, our suicide ideation high, um, homicidal ideation high, that means that those individuals or those students have a plan and a means. They thought about it, they have a plan in place, they they charted it out, and they know what they plan to do. Whereas with the low, it's no plan nor means, maybe it's just a statement has been made. But we take all of those types of threats very seriously. Um, and so anytime we have any type of threat like that, the counselor intervenes. Um, if it goes to the next level, like I said, these are tier-two, tier-three, then our counseling and mental health department intervenes as well, and we also will include our, um, Spring I C Police Department. Now, there are other areas that we track, but, uh, these that you see right here are our top eight. Um, and so we use this data to truly just assess what are the needs of our students, right? And so based on the interactions, we've seen an increase in depression, um, anxiety, as well as substance abuse. Now, there are some implications of the medication, um, on mental health as well as behavior. So we have students.
That's a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
We saw some drops in the twenty-twenty-one data. Is that because, like, the kids were at home or?
In in overall, in the twenty-twenty-one data? Yes, ma'am. So let me go back and, uh, reiterate. So we know that our, our nineteen-twenty, nineteen-twenty school year, uh, was the year that the pandemic, we basically left school early, um, in March due to the pandemic. Twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, uh, was a lot of virtual learning. Most of our students were learning virtually. And then we had twenty-one, twenty-two, where we were back to in-person learning. Thank you for that. So as I was discussing the implications of the medication, we know that, um, some of our students receive medication for A D H D, uh, for the A D H D, uh, disorder. In most cases, these students receive two doses, and those doses could take place one in the morning and then usually one midday or in the afternoon. Um, so where the concern lies is that students may not receive their morning dose. Um, you always, uh, my mother's a retired teacher and she subs and she says, kids will come to school sometimes and, oh, I didn't have my medicine this morning, ma'am. And so, and you kind of see a difference in their behavior. And so we kind of see those behavioral disar, concerns and those discipline concerns. Um, but now I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Thomas, our director of nursing and health services, and she'll provide more information, uh, and data on the concerns.
So thank you, Dr. Collins, uh, President Durant, the rest of the board members. Um, I wanted to look at this issue, um, after several conversations in our department about challenging behaviors. Um, that triggered me to look at these medications because in informal evaluations, when I go to the different schools in the clinics, I noticed there's a lot of medications given to children for A D H D. So I was surprised that we were having such, um, high numbers of concerns with children's behavior. So I looked at some of the nursing research and certain nursing literature in terms of how we medicate children in school, and some of the common medications given for A D H D in schools in general are the ones you see listed on the screen, and that is Adderall, Ritalin, Concerta, and Focalin. Uh, Adderall and Focalin tend to be, uh, the extended-release drugs are used more commonly, um, because it gets the person through a longer day. Whereas Ritalin, Concerta, while they're a little older, are still being used, you just have to take more doses. When I looked at the students in our ca, in our campuses being medicated, uh, for A D H D with these drugs in particular, uh, and I want to remind you, I only looked at these drugs. There were several that I could have looked at, but I chose these based on the nursing literature. Uh, the majority of our students are receiving either Focalin or Adderall as the medication of choice by their respective physicians. So when you look at how these drugs actually work, they primarily work with neurotransmitters in your brain to provide a calming effect. So they help to reduce hyperactivity, uh, they are also some types of impulsive behaviors. So in the classroom, the teacher might see the student, uh, yelling out or not, uh, taking their turn. Uh, they might be very impulsive in that they're, um, engaged with other people's things and not paying attention to their own items or property. Um, they might tend to become a little upset, a little easier than some students with just a simple comment being made by another classmate or another student. So when medications like these are given, we look at them in terms of how long they last in the body. So the regular shrink medications tend to be short-acting. They last anywhere about four to six hours in terms of duration, which means you have to take one to two to three doses a day to get a full day's effect. We don't like to give these medications too late in the evening because then people won't be able to have some good sleep. So usually somewhere, um, the last dose is usually given around five or six o'clock if they're gonna take a short-acting drug. However, extended-release drugs are usually given twice a day because they last somewhere between ten and twelve hours. So some of the things that we thought about in nursing was if the students were having some additional concerns or some addition, additional behaviors, one of the first questions we want to ask is, are they getting their initial dose in the morning? So for example, if the student is taking a short-acting medication, they would have to get a dose before they came to school in order to get a four-to-six-hour effect. So if they were to take it at six or seven o'clock in the morning, it should last them anywhere between ten and eleven o'clock in the afternoon, which would compensate for the need for them to have a lunchtime dose. The concern with the lunchtime dose is, um, many physicians don't realize lunch on a school campus is not the same lunch hour that he has. Our students don't necessarily work on an eight-to-five day like a doctor does. So sometimes lunch for a student could be as early as ten, ten-forty-ish, depending on the campus. It could be a little later, about eight-thirty, eleven-thirty. So if he writes the prescription for noon, which is a classic lunch hour in the, in this true sense of everywhere else but a school district, that could be kind of late to be getting the medication. So therefore, if we give it at noon, then the child will have a better effect somewhere between until about four or five o'clock, which is probably why parents don't see very many concerns by the time the child comes home. However, if the child ta, has math at nine and ten o'clock in the morning, the math teacher probably sees a little bit more of challenging behaviors than maybe they would see by the time the student got home. So when I looked at the number of students that are taking just these four medications, we had a little less than about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty students across the district who receive at least one dose of one of these medications while they're at school. So some of them are getting, uh, a dose sometimes at lunch, or they get their first dose at school in general, but they get at least one of the drugs I mentioned earlier during their school day. So when you look at our feeder patterns, the largest number of students who receive these medications are feeder, feeder pattern six, which is our high school group. And then after that, you'll see a feeder one, which is middle school, and feeder three, which is, uh, elementary school. And so, uh, some of these campuses, there's as high as thirty children or so getting these medications, some there might be ten or twelve. Uh, and a few had about thirteen, twelve to thirteen children who were being medicated at least once throughout the day at school, during their school day. So after.
May I ask, may I ask a question? Okay, uh, earlier in your presentation, it said a large percentage, it large percentage of our students received doses of medication for attention deficit, hyperactivity disorder. And then, uh, you have N equals two forty-five?
About two forty-nine.
Two forty-nine on the stimulants, and it's, uh, it seems to add up with the feeder patterns too. So were you just taking a sample of about two hundred and fifty students?
No, I didn't take a sample of students. I took the sample based on the medication in particular. So of the four medications that I looked at, Adderall, Focalin, Ritalin, and Concerta, there were two hundred and forty-nine students taking just that, those medications.
So what you're saying is it's not like a high percentage of students in that Spring I S D are taking it. It's a higher percent than
It's what I'm saying is.
High populations?
Uh, what I'm saying is of those four drugs only that I looked at, I did not look at all other drugs that others, the students could be taking. There is, there's probably about ten or twelve more that I could have looked at. I only looked at the top four because those are the ones that are po, commonly discussed in nursing literature in schools. When you look at school nursing literature, you'll see those four drugs listed as the most common ones given. But we are giving others as well. I just did.
And this is just elementary school?
No, this is all of our.
So, uh, it's like two hundred and fifty students out of three, thirty thousand students.
That is correct.
Doesn't sound like a hyper-sentiment.
It doesn't. It doesn't when you are li, only looking at four medications.
Okay.
But there were several others that I could have looked at that I did not look at.
Right, so the, the two hundred and fifty or two hundred and forty-nine are just of these most popular medications? However, we have more students, which we didn't include, um, that are taking other medications. So.
I just wondered how concerned I needed to be about when I sit here, a large percentage, I'm thinking half of them, you know, and that would be fifteen thousand students.
Well, as, as we look at in terms of the diagnosis of A D H D, it's a, it's a good number of students who take a medication, but they may not be taking it at school. So there is a, we have a, a good number of students who take these types of medications, but we just don't give them while they're at school.
Thank you.
So when you look at, uh, the assumptions that we were making in terms of our team, uh, in, uh, our department, and as well as just the nurses in general having some conversations about our students who are being medicated during the school day, there were a couple of assumptions that we made, and most of them were surrounded about what we know about the drug itself. Some of them were not sure if they're getting some doses. So perhaps a dose that would have been given at home may not have been given. Some parents might think if you tell your child, go take your medicine, they'll take it, but between the time you tell them to take it and they're supposed to take it, they could have forgotten and may not have taken it at all. Um, in some cases, children might be receiving too much medication. And one of the side effects of too much medication are things like depression, being upset, crying. And in the case of overdosing, uh, we're looking at the fact that most of these medications are designed to be given only Monday through Friday. But in some cases, they might be getting it over the weekend, so if they come to school on Monday and they're having a challenging day, it could be that they have had too much medication over the weekend. And then the other one is incorrect dosing times. That's a conversation that both the, the nurse and the parent would need to have with the physician to clarify what he means by the time of the day. So when he says at lunch, does he understand that lunch could be as early as ten-thirty rather than twelve, one or two o'clock, which is the traditional administration time? And then, of course, inappropriate behavior or disciplinary actions for behaviors. And I just say that in that it could be that some of the students could be receiving some type of, um, disciplinary action, and it's really not their fault. It's because they haven't had their recommended medications. And that's not to say that medications are the only treatment that is used for A D H D. And Dr. Collins will talk more about those things, but we know in nursing that this is just one option, one step, one piece of a comprehensive medication, uh, comprehension, comprehensive treatment plan that would include things like cognitive behavior therapy or just strateg, uh, strategizing in the classroom or where the student could sit. But this in and of, in and of itself could help to improve outcomes for students because it would at least give them the, the ability to concentrate. And then, of course, any kind of missing conversations. It's highly possible that we haven't had the right conversations with parents, just to be sure if they can confirm that their student is taking the medication. Or have they talked to their physician about the times of day? The time they get on the bus versus the time they get home from school? Just thinking about the normal course of the student's day. I'm not exactly sure that those conversations have been had with physicians to let them know that, I know this is what you want us to do, but do you realize that the student has math at this time, or they get on the bus at this time, or they at lunch at this time? that the student has math at this time, or they get on the bus at this time, or they at lunch at this time? He may not be aware of what the course of an actual day is for the student. He just may, may be looking at the time of day, not thinking about what's happening at the time of day for the student. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Thomas. Um, and there has, and there will continue to be some collaboration between guidance and counseling, mental health and our nursing, um, department. And so I want to continue as we're discussing social emotional learning. And the terms mental health and social emotional learning are sometimes used interchangeably, but actually the definitions differ. And that's something that I want to keep in mind, and I'm not gonna read the entire definition. But as we look at social emotional learning and what that looks like, it's just our students and our adults applying kind of these skills that mostly we, we prob- most of us probably learned or hopefully learned as we were growing up and as it's developing our identities and being able to manage our emotions and just being able to show and feel empathy towards others and, um, having those, uh, those relationships and, and making those decisions. And so as I, uh, just mentioned, mental health is looking at one's emotional and their wellbeing. Um, when we think about SCL, SCL is a preventative measure. That is something that we're instilling in our students. We're helping build resiliency within our students. And research tells us that when SCL is promoted, um, it has a positive impact on just a wide range of outcomes, and that includes our academic performance of our students. Um, building those healthy relationships, establishing those relationships and just the mental wellness and just much more. And so that's why SCL is so important to be that foundation, right? That sets the foundation, that's layered. And it is that tier one, um, intervention designed to be delivered through whole group instructions by, whole group instruction, excuse me, by our teachers. So the district adopted and implemented two SCL programs this year. Um, Quaver SCL is for our elementary campuses and Seven Mindsets for our secondary campuses. And as Dr. Perez mentioned, we do have our, our representatives from Seven Mindsets. The president, Dr. Lupita Canedo, and our campus liaison, Whitney Adams, are here this evening. And so what the department did, we developed a spring cares. Um, we knew that our kids were gonna be coming back from the pandemic and there was a concern. And so there was some disconnect there. So how are we gonna bring our kids and our students back and make those connections and restore those connections? We have kids that have been out of school for two years. And so we established spring cares. And, uh, the care stands for connect, acknowledge, respond, empower and support. And you should have that in your folders where it really outlines, um, the, the domains of the spring cares. Um, and so
Your burgundy folder?
Your burgundy folder.
So in the burgundy folder, you do have an updated presentation and then uh, two of the documents that she will, um, be sharing, that Dr. Collins, the spring cares. It's much easier to read here.
Thank you, Dr. Hannah. So we're very fortunate because both Quaver and Seven Mindsets is aligned with spring cares. As we were rolling out the implementation of our SCL programs, they aligned it with the spring care so that we'll have some continuity and, and start using some of the same common language. Um, so we have a video of the, uh, School of International Studies at BAML implementing Seven Mindsets. So it's just a snippet and if, Mike, if you could cue that video for us, please.
Every other day I have to raise the bar. And if I don't raise the bar, two things happen. You shut down the students and me, I don't do my job as your teacher.
Social emotional learning, uh, is basically making sure that students can build relationships, that they have self-awareness, that they have social awareness, uh, that they develop a growth mindset, they have some resiliency and some grit. Uh, I believe that's a good way to explain how we focus on social emotional learning here on campus.
What SCL brings is the, a way to make sure the child can learn to think and process. And what I tried to do was basically use my, my life and what I go through on a daily basis and implement it. Not necessarily for the child, but have the child understand, hey, we all go through the same thing. We're all struggling and how do we bounce back?
What I realized is that I have to adjust and adapt. You gotta remember those two words. I gotta adjust to the situation and then I have to adapt to the rest.
That sounds like somebody that had their boards together because at first it's kind of hard, correct? But now you're building yourself up to the, to the fact that sports did get you organized, right? So in this life, you gotta be structured and with those structures, you have to be able to understand, hey, I gotta make time for this, I gotta make time for that, and then whatever's not in between, I can't deal with it. So again, you did a good job on that.
The differences that I've seen is that some students who may not have learned or may not have been employing some of those strategies, uh, at home, now they're getting it in their first period class, now they're getting it in their activities. Now they're here to get lunch. So there's different avenues, different venues, different ways we can implement those strategies so all students get the same message. And that brings a smile to my face, knowing that we're, that we're one team, winning as a team, employing those seven mindset, social emotional strategies.
Every other day I have to raise
Thank you. So that was just a snippet and we were actually seeing SCL in action at, uh, BAML International School. And so, I mean, a lot of our campuses are implementing that information, implementing, um, our seven mindsets. Um, um, so as we can see here, some of the numbers as we're looking at, here we see elementary, middle and high school discipline data for the past four years. Uh, we know that the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen B.C., before COVID, um, nineteen twenty, students were in school, as I stated earlier, from August twenty nineteen to March twenty twenty. And we began to see a, a decrease in discipline infractions in twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one, students were virtual learners. And then we're back in-person learning, um, in twenty-one, twenty-two, which is our current school year. If we're just looking at, um, discipline and looking at twenty eighteen discipline and we're comparing it to twenty twenty-one discipline, we can see that there's a decrease every year. Elementary has somewhere about forty-two point five percent, middle fifty-eight point six percent and high school fifty-two percent and, and a, a decrease. And so, um, and then the bottom chart is the SCL lessons. And this is just the, the data based on the number of the time SCL was presented, um, to our campuses and to our students. We have been very fortunate, um, to have mental health partnerships. And so, uh, the virtual services we provide, because we know that some of our students don't have access. So it's important that we provide, um, access and we're being equitable. And so we have the T Chat and T Chat is the virtual, uh, services, um, that's provided through Baylor College of Medicine. It stands for the, uh, the child health access through, um, telemedicine. And T Chat provides teletherapy to students to help, um, again, just to provide access to mental health services. We don't want a student or a family to not have that access because they can't, um, get to that facility or to that agency. And so therefore, or maybe there's no one to come into the schools and visit with them. So they have the option to receive those mental health services through teletherapy, uh, with an adult present. And then we also have Yogi's. Uh, Yoga for Youth is a mindfulness youth program, uh, where our students are implementing mindfulness throughout the day. Um, and so that's offered at, uh, some of our campuses as well. Um, another one of our partnerships, a newer partnership is the Children's Assessment Center, where we're focusing on prevention and, and healing program for abuse for our students. Um, Child Builders is a very similar program as well. Um, we have a CIS where it's, uh, in ten of our schools. KIIS is district-wide, um, Healing Species. That's where we have the rescue dogs and they're coming into the schools and they're teaching our students about violence prevention. Um, and then, of course, our Street Grace is, uh, another, um, awareness program where we're making our students aware of human trafficking and other anti-victimization programming. And I was speaking earlier about Senate Bill Eleven and so, these are some of these mandates and trainings that we have to make sure that our students are being exposed to. So, uh, they are getting that exposure through these programs.
Dr. Collins?
Yes, sir.
Could you go back two slides?
Right here.
Yes, this one. Um, what's, what's the why for the, is that the number of students who have received lessons or is that number of lessons?
It's the number of lessons. So anytime they're accessing the platform and, um, going through the lessons with the students, um, the programs are, are teacher-led, so our teachers access the, the program.
That, that number, I, I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around that. So when you say number of lessons, so, um, in elementary, the, the curriculum is Quaver.
Correct.
And that's an online
Yes.
Application. And so this means four thousand eight hundred and ninety-three times someone accessed the application, completed a lesson, like what's that?
Yes, that's the usage going through the lessons with the students, completing the lessons with the students.
I might have to just process that more because that, I don't see how that's useful data uh, in terms of how it's impacting kids. Cause the, the chart above is actually tracking children or, uh, infractions.
Yes, infractions, correct.
Right. So like that makes good sense to me, right? So that you can see how, uh, in twenty eighteen, like right when we ended at March, we went on break. Um, and then when, where, this is the current data and the light blue, which is about the same timeframe. So that's showing improvement, but I can't, I'm not really understanding how the number of lessons conducted on a computer correlates to this data. And maybe I'm saying that wrong.
Okay, so, um, when we say it is an online program, the teachers are going into accessing the program. They're, um, implementing the curriculum with the students and then going through and marking it complete. And so that's how we're tracking the numbers right now. One of the things as we're moving forward with the program next year, we're working on a, uh, a more efficient and effective tracking and monitoring piece. And that is something that we have, have been discussing with our vendors, uh, with regard to, um, being able to track the data and with usage. So we can actually see, uh, um, more intentional and be more impactful.
Right. Cause I gotta tell you, like, as a, as a former teacher, the, 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 this looks like I covered it.
Looks like what I'm
I covered it. It doesn't look like it was taught and learned. It looks like it was covered. To me, that's not really useful data.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It, it does. And I know, uh, that was one of the conversations that I know they're laughing because I brought that up. And so what we're looking for is to see the impact, right? And so, uh, we're working with our partners, uh, on developing when something is given to a student, what's the impact, not just that we covered it, right? And so that's what we're working, uh, with our partner to make sure that we have meaningful data that it actually gives us the actual impact given when I actually teach something. Yes, sir.
So you indicated, uh, Dr. Collins, that it tracks when they access the lesson and when it's completed. Is it possible to get down to that completion level? Is this four thousand eight hundred and ninety-three for elementary completed or just access?
That's more the, um, the access and ideally they should have completed those lessons. We have an implementation program that is broken down or implementation plan, rather, that's broken down, um, by each month and each week. And it's as it's aligned to the spring cares as well as the castle competencies. And so it's very plug and play as the teachers are going in and going through that process. Um, because it was a new rollout, um, we initially started with a select group of classes through social studies classes. Our own ISON campuses, um, opted to, uh, implement throughout their entire campus. So the numbers are gonna fluctuate a little bit. Um, but we're, we're hoping that with implementing the SCL lessons, that that is being impactful on the school climate and culture and has an impact on, uh, possibly why the discipline numbers have decreased.
On a positive note, if you go back to that slide. Sorry. It amazes me that the infractions are down this year in every single level. Because, uh, is what I read and when just chatting with people, uh, from other districts and within our district, uh, they were complaining about how the students were, uh, had forgotten how to be socialized in classrooms and they had to be re-socialized this year. And, you know, the, I, I just thought it was gonna be just discipline, discipline. But this looks like there's fewer. Whatever the reason is, uh, it's kind of interesting to look at.
Uh, and what I can say is that that is something that we're currently working on, right? So this is a variety of reasons, right? There's nothing that we can say this is the actual why, right? So we know for a fact that if, if the students hear, uh, a lesson restored, right, is gonna decrease. We also know that, uh, in, in doing some work with actual coding of discipline, right? And making sure that our administrators understand how to do X and Y also helps with that as well. As a assistant supes and as a school leadership's office, right? Uh, all this year, we've been tracking springway systems and routines, which are all of the small things that help teachers, uh, work on the systems, thresholding, making sure that, uh, they get students' attention. So all of the little factors have an impact on this, right? Have we pinpointed out exactly what is the one thing? Uh, not yet, but we do know that the more we put on, uh, touch points with people and as Dr. Collins mentioned, the more that we, we, we allow our ability to build relationships with kids as they're walking in and we care for them, that's gonna have a sustainable and long-lasting impact, right? Once the kids know that you care, then i- it becomes a whole different world. And that's part of the work that we have to continue to improve in making sure that we have meaningful change that's sustainable uh, at all of our campuses and all of our classrooms.
So so I wanted to go back to that slide again. I'm, yeah, sorry. I, I'm with, um, Mr. Adams here. It is kind of hard to wrap the, my mind around the numbers, I guess. Um, because it's about twelve thousand. Am I doing that math right? About twelve thousand lessons and we have thirty-three thousand kids. So that's roughly about two touches per kid? No, am I doing that right? So anyway, anyway. Yeah, yeah. So, so I, I, I'm glad that we are talking about this though. I've, I've so my first question is, what was the premise to present this to us today?
So, um, the premise or the
Well, and, and, and I'm not, I'm not being condescending. I'm trying to understand because I feel like I, I'm, I'm happy we're having this conversation because I feel like we should have had this much sooner. And so I didn't know if there was an event or some reason why we needed to talk about this or just the fact that it just finally we needed to talk about this.
So, I'm sorry, um, Dr. Collins and, uh, Ms. Correa, one of the reasons we did bring it back and we waited till now. If you'll recall, Dr. Collins came in at the very beginning of the year to share with us, number one, um, what we were doing. We talked about, um, the two, uh, programs that we had purchased and we even saw some of the little videos. And, and then we've begun implementation. And so the, the reason we're coming back is twofold. We want to make our community aware, this is Mental Health Month and, you know, um, bringing that awareness, uh, to our families, to our teachers, to, to us. And then the second piece is to provide you an update with the usage of the program. The correlation, as, uh, Dr. Collins and Dr. Perez have said, the correlation is not a direct correlation, right? The variables are many. Um, we don't want to say that the use of the social emotional learning lessons are directly, um, responsible for the discipline going down. Um, however, social emotional lessons are to teach children how to manage their emotions, how to be able to control reactions. So that is one of the variables that we are implementing as well as our springway systems and routines, as well as our teachers intentionally forming relationships with students. So one of the reasons our partners are here, especially with, um, our seven mindsets, is for us to be able to, um, look at the implementation. You can see implementation was much higher at some levels than at other levels. Um, the variables are many. And so meeting with them to close out, analyze what happened, how did it go, what worked, what didn't work? And begin our planning for implementation for next year. So this is more an awareness for you, um, to know, are we doing the lessons? This is part of our recovery plan? And are we being reflective of our work and being able to move forward, um, with a system and a program that supports our teachers and supports our students?
I would like to comment that they did bring the programs to us and we had asked for an update. Okay. And, um, Dr. Hina also waited till Mental Health Month so that we could bring awareness to it and to provide the board the update today. And I, I believe Trustee McDaniels had asked for, uh, an update and that's kind of what
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, that probably just came off, came off completely wrong. So I did Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, that probably just came off, came off completely wrong, so I did not mean any disrespect, it was just, I was trying to say that I'm glad we're having these conversations, because I wish we would talk about this more. Um, I'm personally painfully familiar with everything that's in this presentation, unfortunately, and so any opportunity to talk about this and bring it out into the public, I think is great. Um, but I do have a question about the, do, implementation, do we have any um, uh, data or uh, ideas as far as uh, whether these are being done with fidelity with the teachers, do we have any way of tracking that? And the only reason I say that is because I have been just blatantly told I don't have time to do these kind of things, and so it makes me wonder how many other teachers might be feeling the same way, and just thinking, I just don't, I'm so much, you know, I have so much pressure to do everything else, this is just a buzzword that I don't have time to, to cover right now.
Right, and we have gotten some of that feedback with the new curriculum and teachers feeling a bit overwhelmed and a lot on their plate, and what we've communicated and we're, we're really trying to um, hone in on is the how, the importance of it, right? So, it's not something that's going away, it's something that's becoming part of our culture, and we see the need for it. Um, so much to the point where, and this, this is in my next steps in my presentation, that every administrator, every teacher will be trained in our SCL programs, both, both waiver and seven mindsets, and our summer leadership and our summer PD. Um, we are uh, as part of our next steps, uh, to, uh, be more intentional about developing a tracking and monitoring system. Um, right now, our counselors are just kinda monitoring whether or not they're implementing it on the campuses, so they can kinda provide that additional support. Let's say a teacher uh, sees some concerning issues with Little Johnny as they're working through some SCL lessons, and so that's when they let the teacher or the counselor know, hey, I think, you know, we need to call Little Johnny and have some deeper conversations, right? Um, so that's really, again, like I said, the tier one, the foundational aspect of it, and this is something that, of course, next year, we will, this is our first year of implementation, so there's some hiccups, some bumps along the way, and so we're iron, ironing all of those out so that we can start off next year, um, really just hitting the road running, um, where we'll have a very smooth uh, process and uh, implementation as we're partnering with our, our vendors to um, help in that process, but, I mean, absolutely, uh, as far as can I say that each campus is doing it, and each campus is doing it, definitely, absolutely not, but are we gonna be definitely more intentional and have a monitoring and a plan in place to ensure that as much as possible, um, and, and teachers will be held accountable? Um, if the implementation is not taking place, absolutely.
Um, so, just to piggyback sort of on um, Trustee Correa's question, you sort of touched on it, I'm wondering, because looking especially at the high school, how there's that drop there, um, how we are, and maybe it's a part of, you know, the implementation plan, but how are we helping teachers to plan? Um, I know we focus so much on academics and our POCs and our planning, um, how are we supporting teachers to see how this can, to her point, how this can fit into um, their instructional day?
Right, and so part of that is, again, with our summer PD, uh, professional development, it was seven mindsets, each of our campuses have what's called an SCL champion, and so uh, we definitely are be more intentional about making sure that those uh, SCL champions are meeting and coming up and supporting their campuses. Uh, as I stated, our liaison, Ms. Whitney Adams, will be the one, and currently works with our SCL champions on the campuses. Uh, and so we want it to be seen that SCL is not anything separate, um, all of our campuses have an intervention period built in, and with that being built in, that is an opportunity um, for our SCL programs to be part of the school culture and part of the everyday, um, just like they will go through any other class and any other lessons that will be received in the SCL as well.
So, Dr. Collins, I, I think you should know that this board fully supports SCL. Dr. Jensen is one of the biggest champions of it.
I do, thank you.
But that support is not universal, particularly in this state where SCL gets criticized as fuzzy at times, right? And so I think it's important that whenever you present data like this, it is substantive. Um, and even, so I, I'm always asking for longitudinal data, well, we don't really have that, this is kinda new for us, but it, I would expect to see some sort of benchmark, again, I'm, I'm a former math teacher, I wanna see some sort of benchmark that says where we were. I wanna see an application of the program, and then I wanna see where we were afterwards, and this just doesn't show that, and so when, when I'm talking to other folks, to other trustees around the state about this stuff, I, I, I need to make it less fuzzy and, and, and much harder, so that would be helpful going forward.
Absolutely, and as she said, this is our baseline data, so our, our goal is to grow from this, through those benchmarks.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Our SCL champions on the campuses?
Uh, we have one for each uh, middle school and high school.
One for each middle school.
Each middle school and high school.
Is that their solo responsibility, or is it someone that's doing that in addition to their?
In addition to their responsibilities.
I, I did wanna touch on something real quick before we move on, and this is farther back in your presentation. There's a, there's a pretty legitimate connection between um, economically disadvantaged and a higher proportion of kids being diagnosed with ADD, ADHD. And so if you say that our numbers, you know, a large portion of our students are taking these medications, then it almost makes me wonder if that's another of the missing pieces that we're, we're not paying attention to when it comes to the learning loss and the gap that we're having, since we have such a high a large percentage of economically disadvantaged students. So is that something that we need to consider looking into more to see if there are some effects from the medications or um, the, the diagnosis, you know, something else that can help us along that path?
Trustee Correa, I think you brought up a really important point, uh, I was worried about our high levels of uh, medication, and um, I, I just really uh, don't know how to get it, uh, let's say, measurement or working with parents to find out uh, if you're just medicating somebody to uh, make them less energetic, because um, having been a mother of two energetic kids and energetic grandkids, and uh, I know they drove their teachers crazy sometimes, but it was, they had to be kept busy. You know, I didn't wanna drug them down, it's just, uh, I can tell you, I have sat as a teacher observer of other teachers, when I'm, I sit there and I think, I would be a discipline problem in this class, this is so boring. You know, I wouldn't be able to stand this, I would just start causing trouble just to entertain myself. You know, so I, I'm just saying there, that, there's a lot of things here, uh, moving parts, and I just feel like this slide is begging for a graduate student somewhere to disaggregate some of those things, uh, there's so many factors going on, it'd be fascinating to find, and, and we do have a little longitudinal there, you know, we do have four years, right? Um, uh, even though this year isn't quite complete, uh, but still, you know, we have a trend there, so something's been going on this year to reduce the number of infractions.
Along those same lines, could we go back to the assumption slide? The, when we were talking about the medication?
Sure.
I'm, I'm just one, mm-hmm, I'm just wondering, um, nurse, tell me your last name, I'm sorry.
Thomas.
Nurse Thomas, um, looking at these assumptions, and we know some things are beyond our control when it comes to students taking medicine before school, um, what recommendations do you have as um, a district, or which do you feel we could get at, you know, through um, targeted efforts, what do you recommend here for this slide, for things that we can control?
So there, uh, there are a few we can control, what, the one that concerns me the most is the incorrect dosing times. I'm not so sure that anyone's really sitting down with the, the child's physician and explaining to them what their day looks like. I don't, I don't think a doctor necessarily understands that their day starts really early, some of these kids get up super early to get on the bus, I mean, i- it's not like an eighth of five day, so when they're planning the regime on how they wanna give it, they need to take into consideration that maybe the first two hours of that child's day is in a, a core class, like math or reading, and they need to be able to focus and concentrate, so how he writes the order for the very first dose of the day could impact that part of their day, and I, I'm not so sure that conversation's being had. In fact, I have seen some cases uh, in our district where I saw the doctor write it for at lunch, but lunch is really early for that student, and I don't think he, it's been communicated back and forth, even from our department in nursing to say, maybe I should have a call with the physician, or have a call with the parent and say, you know, I know he said at lunch, but does he know that lunch for your child is at eleven o'clock or ten o'clock in the morning, ten, thirty in the morning?
So might that be something where we encourage parents to provide a school schedule to the doctor?
Exactly, exactly, and, and, and that would be like a, a meeting that, uh, once the nurse receives the physician's order, and she sees that he clearly documented at a time that just seems odd for us, that would be ea- it would be easy to send him a schedule, the nur- the school nurse could do that, the parent could do that, anyone could really provide him a schedule, it's, it wouldn't be anything that would be difficult to do, but I think it requires more than just saying, as you know, uh, Dr. Jensen is saying, just because you're busy and you're constantly moving doesn't mean you need medication. And so in those cases, the nurse could actually talk with the teacher and find out, how are they really doing? Are they doing better, or do you see improvement, or do you not see any change? Then maybe it's something else we need to try, maybe we need to reach out to the counselor, reach out to the mo- the parents to have a more comprehensive conversation. Um, I believe there's several conversations occurring, I'm just not sure they're coming together at the same time. So between the provider, there's, and the parent, there's a conversation, maybe the nurse and the parent, there's a conversation, maybe the teacher and the parent, there's a conversation. But I'm not so sure that we've come together collectively to, to really talk about, um, if this is really what that student needs.
I think as a board, you can see we're very passionate about SCL, and I wanna thank Dr. Collins and Dr. Thomas uh, for what, for continuing to keep our focus where it needs to be, I think they have some great recommendations in their next steps at the end of this presentation, so how about we? Trying to be tactful.
Yeah.
So, as a department, as a district, we um, make sure that we're providing the training, and so we do provide mental health first aid training. Our educators are trained to um, identify those early warning signs um, of mental health conditions with our students, and making those appropriate uh, referrals to counselors, and so that counselors can make the appropriate um, outside referrals if necessary, and we're providing those wraparound services for our students, and so some of those trainings, there's youth mental health first aid, um, adult mental health first aid, um, emotional backpack, that's one of those trainings where our counselors are actually going back and taking the trainings and training, it's like a T O T, trainer of the trainer, training our uh, staff and our teachers in those areas, as well as restorative practices. Um, during the eighty-seventh legislature, um, Senate Bill two seventy-nine was passed, and what this is, this act is was related to the inclusion of suicide prevention information on student ID cards or identification cards issued by public school districts, so um, each student ID card issued by public school to a student in grade six or higher um, must have printed on their card or on the back of the card, somewhere on the card, um, contact information for the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, um, the crisis text line, and uh, may have printed on the card the contact information for our local suicide prevention hotline, if available. And so that is one of the things that we are in compliance with, and spring, every student who has an ID, um, middle school, sixth grade and higher, um, has access to suicide prevention information on the back of their IDs. We have spent the um, last year really focusing on uh, mental health and providing psychoeducation on mental health and self-care for our students and for our staff, so as we're keeping track of the data, we're also looking at the data of our staff crisis response. Um, so we've provided ways for our staff to cope with mental health stressors, um, which has really assisted in reducing the number of uh, mental health crises that our staff is experiencing. Again, as you see the numbers, nineteen twenty, uh, we were home pretty much from March into the end of the year. Uh, twenty twenty twenty-one, uh, our students were, are virtual, and, and s- some of our, our staff as well, and we had a a higher number of mental health crisis response, and then you can see in twenty-one, twenty-two, that number has decreased, and so we're very happy to say um, that, you know, we, we have been providing that psychoeducation, we've been providing supports for our campuses, and so, and for our staff, and that's something that we're very focused on as well, um, as part of that, uh, again, we're making uh, resources available, uh, we have a partnership with uh, Care A- Care A T C, um, and with Care A T C, we have a um, licensed professional counselor on staff, um, that will see um, uh, teachers uh, through teletherapy, in-person visits, um, um, that are experiencing any mental health concerns or crises, and we have our self-care, um, our wellness staff support rooms, and that's something that was new, that was implemented um, this year, as well as Care, our Care A T C partnership, our wellness staff support rooms uh, was something that was implemented new, uh, simply because we, we heard the call, I believe we had one of our, our district level admin meetings, it's like, what can we do? Our, our staff is suffering, and um, Dr. Hill put that charge out, and it's like, okay, you know what, we, we know that if our staff is well, then our students can be well, and we, we want uh, our teachers in the classroom to be in a place and a space where they can provide support for our students, and if they're not in a mentally good place, then they're not gonna be able to do that for our students, and so, again, we have a, just a quick little video, um, a snippet of a video, so Mike, if you could please play that video for us, um, that showcases our, our mental health, our, our wellness staff support rooms. Our wellness support rooms are a safe space in your building or facility, the rooms will help show staff appreciation, provide individualized support, coping skills, mental health resources, and staff will acquire self-care techniques.
I also appreciate the fact that, um, this amazing group saying, hey, we care about you, you're not invisible, we recognize you, what can we do for you? I hope I can learn to be as humble they are, and thank you.
Expect coming in with um, the foot massage, back massage, but that foot massage was awesome. A wonderful feature.
So I was saying that it was nice, you know, there's a lot of teachers, educators in general, that are very stressed and anxious, and it's nice to see that the district is doing something about it to help us be well-rounded.
So again, that's just a little snippet, uh, we have some other testimonials, but just the fact that our department can just provide that support, and that's important, important to us, as I stated, uh, we want the well-being of our staff, that's one of our strategic priorities, well-being, so it's the well-being of our staff, it's well-being of our students as well, and so the wellness staff support room um, provides that. And then, of course, we have our um, our multi-tiered support, student mental health services and supports, this was developed this year, um, simply so we can support the mental and behavioral health, and provide school climate and, and build competencies around social and emotional domains. And so we want to promote effective student learning to ensure that our students, as you can see, at that bottom level or that tiered level, which is usually about eighty percent of our students, um, that mental health promotion and prevention for all of our students, that's something that all of our students will be receiving, um, based on our tiered levels of support. Um, and then our, more the, the uh, yellow area identifies those targeted interventions at tier two, and then the red, of course, is those specialized services for just a few students at tier three. And so part of that, our student mental health service is important, just works in tandem, just making sure that we're, we're developing the student, the students, act, the whole student, academically, emotionally, um, and so they are able to adjust and deal and uh, be resilient to address some of the rigors that life has comes, that comes across in life, so we have our, um, and again, this is in your mood folder, um, just based on uh, the different supports that our department offers, and it's broken down just with positive behavior, mental health, um, academic, social, emotional, and restorative practices, and the role each member of our department plays in providing those supports, we have our counselors in there, we have our Kies, we have our mental health coordinators, um, and so just ensuring that our, our students that are most at risk um, are, their needs are being, are being met. Um, as I move forward to our next steps, um, a charge from our superintendent, as we engage, connect, and commit, um, that we know that the mental health and wellness uh, fair was one of the things that uh, we did in collaboration or events, I'm sorry, we had in collaboration with our- I'm sorry, we had in collaboration with our board of trustees, um, that in- included community and a parent panel to discuss just how, um, how we can better support our families with mental health concerns. Um, the nursing department collaborated with us as well, um, had a booth available to provide health services for, um, students and families that were present. Uh, one of the things as far as moving forward with that, we want to continue with that mental health or wellness fair. Uh, we know that there's a stigma that's associated with mental health and, um, being able to kind of break that stigma and make it okay to not be okay. And having people feel comfortable about addressing those mental health concerns that they have. Um, one of our other, another next step is, um, that our data-driven mental health decisions. Uh, we want to collect data on mental health and be very intentional that we're using that data for our mental health check-ins. We have mental health behavior specialists and they, uh, provide those check-ins for our students and, uh, given that additional wraparound services. So being intentional and being preventative in our mental health program made for students just based on whatever mental health needs they may have. So we will continue to review, monitor and revise our programming, um, to meet the needs, uh, based on surveys and based on the data that's collected. Um, again, the eighty-six, eighty-six legislator, legislature, um, has laws to improve access and quality, uh, uh, access to, and, uh, qualified school mental health. And so with Senate Bill eleven, um, what was one of the key components. And we're looking at, uh, Senate Bill eleven response with a threat assessment team formation. We are collaborating with the Spring I S D Police Department, um, just to, uh, make sure that we have some processes in place, um, that we are providing, um, uh, components to the, to conduct those behavioral, um, threat assessments. Um, also just having, uh, a systemat- systematic procedures to the threat assessment response. Um, also increasing our S E L training usage and monitoring. I spoke about that just a little bit earlier. That is on our next steps. We know that we have that, that foundation where we're adding concrete to that foundation, right? We want to build it up so that we're ensuring, as I said, S E L is just becomes part of our everyday lives. It's something that we do without thinking. It's ingrained and ingrated into our culture here in Spring I S D. Um, so we want to increase that training and that usage and that monitoring so that we can see the impact that it's truly making on our students. And we're, um, also collaborating with our mental health, mi- with mental health, with family engagement. Um, that's a very important piece, as I was stating earlier, we, um, our programs have parent components. And so we need to make our parents aware of how they can continue to support their students while they're at home. We provide that support at school, but just to have a continuity of care and support, um, so that parents are, uh, equipped with the skills to help, uh, their kids at home. Um, and then, uh, we have our Rise Recovery. That's a new program, um, that we are looking to have an M O U with. As I stated in our data earlier, we have some substance abuse concerns within, in the district. And so the substance abuse intervention provides teletherapy, again, making it very convenient to provide services and mental health services for our students that are having some of those experiences. Just wanting to, to promote a continuum of mental health care, um, awareness, um, support and wraparound services, continue to build capacity within our counselors. So our counselors are aware they're supporting the whole child and meeting the whole child's needs. Uh, and then, um, one of the things that has been at the forefront is of my mind is, and more so recently, uh, student mental health ambassadors. Uh, one thing that you find out about students, yes, we build those relationships and we're adults and they talk to us. And they talk to us about what they want to talk to us about, right? Um, but oftentimes they feel very comfortable talking to their peers, their peer group. And so can you imagine a, a fifteen-year-old going to another fifteen-year-old trying to give them advice, right? But if we equip our, our students with those skills to help in that process, and they think, they can become those mental health ambassadors and those S E L ambassadors, um, to where we're really ingraining this information, uh, within our students. And those ambassadors can come to the adults and say, hey, my friend is experiencing this. Can you help? Um, and so that we're not getting those cries of help after the fact. Before I ask, go on to see if there are any questions, I do ask if we can a- address the, uh, board with a, a little small token, uh, in recognition of Mental Health, um, Awareness Month with maybe a Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, we want to break the stigma. Uh, we want to acknowledge that it is mental health. Uh, one of the, if I can just share, thank you, Dr. Thomas. If I can just share, um, a personal story. Oftentimes I, I visit campuses and every time I visit a campus, I always try to make a point to talk to the students, you know, love the students, like to hear what they have to say. Well, yesterday was a little more, um, touching, um, to me. Um, there was a student in the hallway and he was comforting another student. And I went over just to, you know, check on him, to see how they were doing and just kind of talking to him. He shared his own struggles that he was having with mental health. And I asked him, I said, you know, I think there was another counselor with, you know, a counselor, she's a counselor. I'm just curious, what do you need from us? What can we do? How can we help? And his response was, he starts with a conversation. And so I charge everyone in here. I charge all of our educators. I charge our teachers, our administrators and just our adults. Should start with a conversation. You never know where that may take you. One of the things that I said, um, in the mental health, uh, fair was we have our physical mask that we had to wear during COVID, but we have to realize people are wearing masks all the time that they're not removing. And so we have to have them remove that mask and go deep and really figure out what's really going on with them and ask those questions and start a conversation. Thank you.
Questions?
One good question. Um, is it possible to get data on the number of students that are in SPED who are taking medication?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I, I wanted to say, I'm very pleased to see that we are maintaining the services and training. Particularly, I'm a big fan of mental health first aid training. That's it. There's a stigma attached to it. And I think the more people in the community that have an awareness of what things to look for and what initial things you can do. We, kids, I believe kids when they graduate have to have CPR. I think everybody graduating should have to have mental health first aid training. I, I think that should be a graduation requirement. So I'm glad to see we're continuing to that. Um, and I, I had a question on the staff mental health support. You, you provided, again, I, I love this longitudinal data on, uh, our, our staff mental health support. Um, I think it'd be interesting to see if there are periods during the year or the school year where that peaks or dips. Um, and so, I mean, maybe we can figure out if, if there's something that we can do to provide extra support during particular times, if there is a pattern like that.
Well, I think this really exemplifies when we say we went as a team, to have our guidance and counselors come together with our nursing department and work collaboratively. And then to pull in our police department through the Senate Bill eleven work, to work with our face department with, um, Ms. Carol, to work with workforce development, because we're getting P D for our staff. And then to actually pull in the students themselves as ambassadors. That's a winning formula. That's engaging everyone in the process of developing, uh, solutions to our challenges around mental health. And as a district with high, um, you know, with a high percentage, that's what it's going to take. It's going to take that village, you know, to move the needle and make a difference. And I don't think it just stops here in Spring I S D. I think mental health is impacting this country right now. Now, we're seeing a lot of even crimes and events that are occurring when really the person just really needed some help.
Right.
And if we can start with them now, while we have them in school, we can help to impact not just Spring I S D, but this country with what we're doing here. And so this is actually amazing. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Hinoasa. For our next item, I'd like to, again, recognize our superintendent of schools, Dr. Lapita Hinoasa.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ant. And I am actually going to do this presentation and walk us through and give our board an update on our, um, strategic plan. And so you should have a green folder with the presentation in there. Think everybody's found their folder. Yes. All right. So our strategic plan and what we want to do today is bring our board, um, those of our community members that are sitting at home, watching, and our administrators and leaders that are here today, just to bring everyone an update on our strategic plan, every student, every teacher, every day. And so what we're going to do today is we're going to review the progress to date of where we are on our strategic plan and its implementation. We're also going to provide an overview of our clarified strategic plan. And so we're going to walk through our vision, mission, kind of go back to where all of this started for us here in Spring I S D. Then we're going to go over quickly our priorities that the board delivered just this school year in August of twenty twenty-one. Then we're going to talk about our focus areas along with, um, our core values that we adopted back in twenty fifteen and our guiding principles. And then we're going to talk a little bit about how our senior leadership team, um, has been engaging our community and getting feedback from them on the content of the plan and what we have so far. And then we're going to preview some opportunities for you as the board, um, to be able to give us, um, feedback on the plan and then start the goal setting for us as we start looking, um, towards twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. My goodness. And so just a quick reminder, in August of twenty twenty-one, um, you as the board laid out for us what our strategic priorities were going to be. And if you'll recall, our strategic plan, Every Child Twenty Twenty, ended in May of twenty twenty. However, if you recall, I think Dr. Collins just shared, um, that we actually encountered that spring break that never ended. That March fifth, the last day for students, March sixth, the last day for, um, teachers and staff, and we never came back. And so our strategic plan was really on hold. We never got to recap that plan. And you'll know twenty twenty-one, um, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, uh, we were virtual. We were trying just to right-size ourselves. And so then that finds us here now in August of twenty twenty-one, when you laid out our strategic priorities for us. And so, as you know, student outcomes, uh, well-being that we just talked about, leadership, opportunities, engagement with that foundation, that thread that runs across all of the priorities being equity. And so just walking through, we may not have a strategic plan in place. However, we as a district embraced the priorities that you laid before us and we began to work immediately. While this year, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, has been a transition, a transition through the pandemic, a transition through leadership, a transition in so many ways, we didn't stop. Our senior leaders, as well as all of our schools, completely embraced the, um, priorities. So for example, for student outcomes, um, as you know, we launched a new curriculum in pre-K through eight for reading and for math. We knew that last year was very difficult for everyone. And so we embraced that. Our teachers embraced that. I have to say, it was a very difficult year. And the stress that you saw in one of those charts really go up for our teachers. It was been very stressful. Additionally, we, um, also implemented with our teachers, our science of teaching reading. Um, but we knew this is what needed to be done for our students. We also, in tandem, offered all year long specialized training for our teachers. We knew they needed that content development. Brought in, um, consultants to help our teachers on the, in the classrooms, in their planning, um, to be able to develop their lessons. Um, we also are looking to increase our performance in visual arts and opportunities for our children in that area. And all year long, really working to ensure that every student, regardless of the pandemic that we've been in and that, you know, we're trying to come out, that every student as they graduate this year is college and career ready. Under equity, um, and we did, um, this board actually took action, um, early on this semester and said, we need to form our own equity committee. As you will recall, during the pandemic, we had an equity, um, study done in our district. And so needed to start looking at what that looks like, right? Whether we are in the pandemic or not, it's something as the board you asked us to do. So we're, um, already aligning our decisions and systems towards equity. We're doing that reflective process, um, centrally as a district. We're evaluating our plans and, and making sure that our budget and everything that we do, we put that equity lens on. And we're working towards securing funding for even more transformational programs. Because that's the one thing that we realized around equity is that we did have schools that needed help. So you'll recall this past year, this summer, we were awarded the forty million dollar T-class grant. And that definitely helped us bring equity into our schools. And so we will continue to do that work to ensure that all of our campuses are receiving the additional support. Um, and for example, uh, P-Tech at Decanee, we launched that through the pandemic. We secured the grant, planned and launched this year. Um, so we did not slow down around well-being. Um, you just heard that, um, um, work that Dr. Collins, most importantly, our schools and our leaders, leading this work, knowing that it was so important that we not only address social, emotional needs and the well-being of our students, but also of our staff. Um, so this year and working with our, um, equity committee and then bringing it to the board, we actually, as you heard from Dr. Collins, um, have put social workers in our elementary, uh, excuse me, our middle schools and our high schools just this year, right, to be able to be that additional support, um, especially as you're looking at your teenagers, right? As they're going through all of this. We also, through the equity committee, looked at, um, the additional, um, counselors that, that may be needed for campuses. We allocated two additional counselors and are on the docket to bring in, um, additional at-risk counselors at the elementaries. Because you know, our high schools all have an at-risk counselor already. And so as a board, I thank you for, you know, middle of the year correcting and, and addressing this. Um, the curriculum that you just heard, you know, we adopted it really in September. School was starting, but we needed something in place. And so that mixed implementation is because it was late in coming, but it was something we had to put in the hands of our teachers and our students. And then last but not least, and you heard a little bit also, um, the employee health benefits. Um, we do have our own, um, uh, program that's, um, Spring I S D. And so that includes an access to a li- licensed therapist, um, that those, uh, employees that are part of, um, that program have access to. Around our leadership, again, you gave us this as a priority. Um, we've already started working and continue to work on this. And again, you know, your support to make this happen during the school year, identifying, recruiting and retaining our employees, um, that are outcome-driven, that are focused on our leadership definition, um, offering incentives such as the stipends for the teachers. Um, to, to, first and foremost, what we've been aiming for is to retain our teachers that are here. And then, of course, to, um, be able to draw in new teachers. And as you'll recall, middle of the year, we, you know, said to ask the board to approve that increase for our bus drivers also, because the competition was really tough in the district, across region four, and we didn't have enough drivers. So again, you know, working through during the year, we may not have a plan in place. However, we have the priorities that you gave us. And the last piece that we spoke about earlier is the Grow Your Own, um, program to support our paraprofessionals getting certified. And as we said, that was through our T-class grant, only six positions, but we realize that we need and have many more, uh, paraprofessionals out there that are interested. but we realized that we need and have many more paraprofessionals out there that are interested. And that's why you saw that line item in our S-R money. Around opportunities, this is one that was pulled from Every Child 2020 and something that as a board you believe in, we believe that Spring must provide opportunities for our students. And that also helps our students completely stay engaged. And so we continue with implementing innovative programs at the comprehensive schools, right? Not necessarily taking school children out of their home campuses and busing them somewhere, but this really looks at having specialty programs within the campus. So a child doesn't need to get on a bus or wait for a lottery to be selected. And so you'll recall that through this pandemic, we launched the Rick Bailey School for Performing of Visual Arts, our Clotton Polytechnic, our School for International Studies at BAML, our P-Tech program at Decanee that not only has the computer programming pathway, but it allows a student to have the opportunity to graduate with an associate's degree. And our barbering program at Westfield, again, not only will they have the license to be able to be a barber, but also the opportunity for that associate's degree. We believe that all doors need to be open for our children. And so increasing the number of associate's degrees at all of our high schools and working through all this, we have some in the hopper, but Winty will also have an associate's degree stamped and sealed. And we hope to get others up and running by the start of the school year. And so our goal is to ensure that all of our students, not just those that get into a specialty program or specialty school, but all of our students have access to excellent equitable outcomes. Around engagement, and you know, again, the board taking the leadership in this. And I know early on, Ms. Durant saying, not only do we want to have a governance committee, an equity committee, but we want to have a community empowerment committee where the board also gets involved and leads in this work. And so we have that. And the first activity that the committee did was our mental health fair. In engagement, you know, loud and clear from you as the board that we need to make sure we're hearing from our parents, we're hearing from our community and our students. We had not done a school quality survey since 2019. And so it was, it was time. And so this spring semester, our communications department taking the lead on this, we've launched that survey and we should have some good data from our students, from our teachers and from our parents to let us know what we need to do. Our community engagement, our family and community engagement, again, knowing that this was a priority, bringing back our Spanish classes, well, our ESL classes, our GED classes, our computer education classes, adding our Spanish classes. And we had, beginning in January and February, the largest number of families participating. Our face building was full with parents. And we had graduation ceremonies for them not too long ago. And then the big challenge that I gave our team was, you know, as we came, as I came on board and officially on February 1st, was what did we need to do? Was to focus on joy, coming to school with a joyful heart to embrace our children, having the opportunity to reconnect. We've had two years of being separated. You know, the opportunity to reach out to our parents and bring them back into the buildings. Opportunity to reach out to each other and be able to say, are you okay? How can I support you? Being intentional and being intentional about empowering our students, our employees, our parents. And I have to tell you, just yesterday, we met with our parent advisory committee. And we have parents there, every school being represented, that liaison, that family empowerment liaison, bringing to parents. And so we heard from the parents themselves to say, I can feel, I can feel that there's more communication and more openness from the school this semester. And I'd sit there and that's a testament for the principals taking on the charge and opening their buildings. Having schools say, we had two PTO members and now they were up to 82 just this semester. And that's everyone saying, you know, open the doors, being intentional about reconnecting and empowering each other. And our big room at the family engagement building completely full and engaged in the work. Our parents are thanking us because they have the information. Once they have the information, they are empowered. And so I'll tell you, we have taken, embraced the strategic priorities that you have given us and worked them through. And now where we're at is having the opportunity to clarify and finalize our strategic plan. And so this graphic here, just to let you know how this is working and kind of orient you to our work. Up at the top in the blue, it's what we aim for. Our vision, our mission, our North Star goal. And I'm going to go over each one in just a minute, but just to orient you, we've got the vision, the vision that this board set for us back in 2015. Then we have what we are going to do to reach our vision. And that's the priorities that you have given us. That's the what we have to do to get to that vision. And then down at the bottom, it's who we are and how we behave in Spring ISD, how we operate. And that's the core values and the guiding principles that also were established back in 2015. And so what we want to do now is really look at what we are aiming for and just to refresh everyone what has been set for us. And first and foremost, it's our vision. And as we've been meeting with different focus groups, as we've sat down and looked at our vision, we believe that our vision is still true to who we are in Spring ISD, that this district become a district of choice with high-quality academics, with innovative and specialized programs that meet the individual needs of our students. And so with all the input and all the reflection we've done, we believe that this vision stands true to who Spring is and what we aim for. Our mission, our mission still rings true, that Spring ISD prepares our students to be lifelong learners, critical thinkers, I think you heard Dr. Parasol talk about this earlier, but ready to contribute, compete and lead in today's global society. And we believe that still rings true with who Spring is and what we aim for. And the last piece, I know the board set this for us, is our North Star goal. And as you know, we've been working with a partner with our system of great schools. Spring ISD received that grant and we have a partner that has been working with us to strategically meet our North Star goal. And I do want to introduce them because they are here, they've been here all afternoon or all evening with Good Reason Houston, and that's our partner. And I'll tell you, just how you see them here, that's every week they're here with us. We have a Monday meeting regardless, that Monday meeting happens. But we have Becca Dre, Michelle Nguyen, Yawave and Delisa Jones. And so they're here and they've been our support. As what the system of great schools focuses on is to increase the number of high-quality seats, meaning that more children in Spring ISD have the opportunity to attend. And the way the state defines high-quality seats is schools that are rated A and B. And that's our North Star goal there. Mr. Adams, I saw you kind of lean in.
Me and Delicia spent some time together a few years ago. We were Ed Pioneer fellows together. It's good to see you, Delicia.
Yes, and I have to, all of them. And Mireya is someone else that joined the team and is not here, she may be online, Mireya Salas. And but their, their support for us is to, you know, be strategic, make sure that we are aligning to what the board has asked us to do, but ultimately to reach that North Star goal, that we're going to increase the number of A and B campuses in our district and decrease, really eliminate any D and F campuses. And so that's what this strategic plan, the vision for this strategic plan and what you'll see that we're laying out. The next piece is what, what will we do, right? The what is made up of our priorities and we just went through them. But we really put a verb in front of each one, right? So student outcomes is the priority that you gave us. We said improve student outcomes. Opportunities, we said expand. We have opportunities, but it's not yet reached every child. Leadership, we want to cultivate. Well-being, we want to promote and of course strengthen that engagement. While we have lots of great things that are happening, there's much more work to be done. And so we've taken the priorities that you have given us and we've identified focus areas. Focus areas being those pieces that we must work on or the inputs that we must have in order to achieve the priorities. So for example, example, on champion equity, we believe we need to look at our equitable practices across the board and that we also must look at equitable resources. And you know, there's a lot of pieces that go into there, but we believe these are the focus areas that we must start working on. Improving student outcomes, it's not going to happen just doing the same thing over and over again. That high-quality curriculum, the effective instruction and early learning and high school supports. And this one I want to break down just a little bit. It is really tailored to, number one, part of the requirements that the state has put on. But really, our early learning is a focus of this board. The start from, I'll never forget, the very first time that I came here and we had half-day pre-K and the charge was given, make full-day pre-K happen. Didn't you tell me that? I know Ms. Durant was a big proponent. She sat over there and Ms. Newhouse sat right here and they both said, we need to make pre-K available and it needs to be full day. So in 2015, we got, we received our very first grant to make full-day pre-K. We partnered with Head Start and look at where we're at now. So there's a lot of work that needs to happen if we're going to make sure that our students are reading on and above grade level by third grade. And then the high school, you know, high school is so crucial for us. If we can strengthen the foundation, it's going to work its way up. But our high school kiddos can't wait until it works its way up. We've got to address them. So these are the areas, the focus areas that we believe we need to work on as our inputs. And so then our core values. And as I said earlier, our core values, that's how we behave, how we operate in Spring ISD. And as we've been meeting with our district personnel, staff, teachers, principals, parents, community members, we've talked about that our core values still ring true. That we have to base our decision in what's best for our students, that we strive for excellence in all that we do, that we build trust through integrity and lead by example, that we communicate openly, that we value diversity and treat everyone with dignity and respect and that we win as a team. We have those cards, we've been passing them around, we've been implementing this or having it since 2015. Only feedback we've received is lead by example and follow them. Like there's a lot of room for us to grow into these core values. But all the feedback that we're receiving is that these are the right core values that we should aspire to and lead with. Our guiding principles, now here we've received some feedback on making adjustments to our guiding principles. And on my left-hand side are the current guiding principles that we have right now. And then on the right-hand side, it's what's being revised for consideration and what we are testing with our focus groups and getting feedback on what resonates with them, what aligns with them. As far as, you know, the ministerial alliance, how does this resonate and align to what they believe should be our guiding principles? With parents, with teachers, with principals. So one thing I know is you all are reviewing them. If you look at the left-hand side, our current guiding principles, they're more focused on what teachers do and what students do. High-quality teaching drives student learning. Literacy is the foundation of academic success. The learning needs of each student must be met. So we agree with all that. However, in what we are proposing is that our guiding principles should be inclusive of everyone in the district, that it's not only the teachers that are going to make this happen, but it is everyone in the district. And so you'll see the first three bullets really are encompassed more in that very first bullet saying, every educator will hold themselves accountable to high-quality teaching and promoting a culture of literacy across all disciplines. Every educator, whether I'm the counselor, whether I'm the football coach, the reading teacher, the principal, whether I'm the superintendent or I'm the chief of HR, alright? Students learn best in safe environments where school leaders cultivate parent and community partners. And so that again is focused on what is happening on the campus. However, again, all of us, you know, like we are spring. So every employee will support students to learn in a safe and affirming environment. That means everyone. That means what is it that we are doing? What is it that our bus drivers are doing? So it's every employee, it's not just the responsibility of the teacher. Every district resource must center on student learning and focus on accountability. So we certainly believe in that. What we are proposing are two bullets out of that one bullet. Every school and department, so looking at central office, every school and department will strategically adapt based on the results and community input. And so you see our schools doing this really quickly. If our students aren't learning, they'll pivot, they'll form new groups, they'll bring in another teacher, they will do after-school tutorials, they quickly pivot. If they get feedback from their parents that it's not working, they quickly pivot. What we're looking at is how does central office quickly pivot? How do we do that? If a system that we have in place is not supporting the students or our community is giving us feedback, how do we strategically adapt? We can't nor always say we've always done it this way. So that's us. So that's a little bit different. And we're proposing that this new strategic plan have revised guiding principles that you as a board ultimately will approve. And the last one seems to be very similar. Every district resource will center on student learning with a focus on equity and accountability. Before, we were just looking at accountability. Oftentimes, we're holding people accountable, however, they have one hand tied behind their back. So really looking at the equity and are we distributing resources? Are we supporting schools, departments based on their needs? So want you to keep this because we will have time for feedback. So just really quickly to walk you through, senior leadership has been side-by-side with me as we've been meeting with different focus groups. And it's engagement, right? So we have met with them. Good Reason Houston has been with us in these sessions, taking notes, making sure that we're capturing everything that we are receiving back, all the feedback. And so we're asking them And so we're asking them uh to anchor on our shared vision, right? So we share the vision with them, the mission, and we want them to think about, you know, does it ring true? Does it align with what they've seen? We're sharing those principles and those focus areas, how do they see that working over the next five years? Will it get us to that um North Star goal? And last but not least, we're asking them to tell us what resonates with them, especially as community members. So you see the different groups that we've met with. And last night, just an amazing meeting with our parent advisory council. I'll tell you, also our performing and visual arts parents. Um, we didn't walk out of there until eight forty-five last night, the night before. Last night, I think it was eight thirty or something like that. Our parents want to give us input. And so priorities, just really quick, we asked them, how does this resonate? Um, we asked them about student outcomes, they were very pleased, uh very excited that we're focusing on student outcomes, on expanded opportunities. They want us to invest in high interest programming. And they really want us over and over again, the career pathways and the programs that lead to those future careers. I think we heard it from our um representative from Basilees. Cultivating leadership, um really wanting us to focus on building that leadership pipeline from within and working on retaining our talent. Promoting well-being, um they were very pleased across the board that we are um coming up with strategies or for us it would be inputs that include staff. Oftentimes we just focus on our students, but yet our staff is struggling. Um, making the resources available to our students, uh getting them in their uh children's ha- children's hands. Um, strengthening engagement, everyone was very pleased. They were pleased to see themselves, whether they were parents or ministers or business partners. All around, talking about it takes an entire village. And the last piece, they were very excited about how we are working or what is it that we're going to do to close those achievement gaps? Our parents, our ministers, our pe- our principals know there's a big gap between the performance of every group of students. And so really excited that we're going to, this strategic plan will focus on closing those gaps. Focus on empowerment. Our parents said that over and over last night and so did our PDA parents. And meeting our students where they were at. So that was just overall the feedback that we got. And then here, just breaking it down and, and I'll tell you, um Good Reason Houston really helped us work this data. Um, but our ACE committee, they're, most of them are teachers. We do have uh counselors and assistant principals, but our teachers were very um excited to help in the development, you know, help and eager to um support staff at all levels to develop leaders. They wanted to engage even more in the curriculum. I'll tell you, uh Ms. Melendez, our executive director of um curriculum, has really reached out to the schools to bring them in, um to make sure that we're able to support them in the implementation of our um, of our uh curriculum. Uh, and, and um our ACE committee was very happy to see we're working on SCL for our staff. Our principals, um they want to continue to partner with us on the new curriculum, the Carnegie, the Amplify, um, community empowerment committees. Uh, we have two of our principals that are serving on that committee. Um, our principals were very excited that they got to serve um on a committee with the board. Um, and our aspiring principals academy and the residency program. Our ministerial alliance, um you'll see that they're supporting, they were very focused. I think it was one of the groups that Ms. Durant was in. Um, you know, they've worked with us in providing tutors, they want to expand that. I think they spent a lot of time talking about how they could provide tutoring uh for our schools. Uh, but of also extracurricular activities, they were very pleased and also believe we needed more wraparound services. Um, and they want us to really think about how we're going to provide summer programming, how we can partner with them because they see their kids, our kids in the summer without having uh opportunities to become engaged. Our PVA parents, um, they're ready to support um diverse activities. They're ready to engage with us and, and definitely advocating for us to increase the performing and visual arts programs across the entire district. And we've seen amazing examples, um and we see them normally at the high school level. So really urging us to consider what we're doing in elementary, how we can strengthen that and what we're doing at middle school. Because middle school needs to be strong in order to get us those programs that we see in the high schools. And our parent advisory council, you know, the empowerment of, of families over and over again. You know, how can we empower our families so that they can advocate for their children? Um, and this was, um, and I think Ms. Carol is probably already working on this. Uh, our parents from different schools wanted a framework for us to give parents on, like how do they become engaged in a campus, at a school? They really don't know, I mean, they're afraid to come in. And we had the president of the PTO at Reynolds talking about how she went. And it reminded me of both of y'all's stories, how you started volunteering and then they engaged you and grabbed you and then you were at a PTO level and then they engaged you and grabbed you and brought you to a district level committee. They don't know those avenues and they want us to create a framework so that our parents know how they can become involved in their schools. And so here's our guiding principles and again, they gave us feedback. And um their feedback, what resonated with our constituents, with all the different groups? The word and the um, the, the, what they felt across the entire plan was equity. Very pleased that we're going to be looking and, and parents last night wanted to know equity, is it just in resources? Is it equity in um programming? Very interested in that. The, the strategically adapting, they want us to be more nimble to respond to the needs of the schools. Um, oh, system of shared accountability. One of the things that in working with Good Reason Houston and our senior leaders here, making a commitment to not only posting our strategic plan on the website, but coming back and posting the updates on how we are doing. Um, we haven't done that, we haven't communicated that publicly. And so they were very, um, they want that. Emphasizing every person, it does it, it's not only the teacher. We know that that's the biggest difference, but it should be everyone working. Um, and so they were very excited about that. The data-driven decision-making and being able to communicate the why. Why we're making these decisions to be able to share that out. And so here's the work for you all. So additional board feedback and goal setting. Um, because one of the responsibilities of the board is to set the district goals and then of course the superintendent goals. Your board goals is going to cascade from the board goals to superintendent goals, to the district goals, to the campus goals, principal goals, all the way down. So this is where um our next steps come in. So we have the opportunity in June at a work session. We have a date set up already on June twenty-fifth. We're meeting on May twenty-fifth with Dr. McGowan. He's going to make sure and anchor us on, on the work and on Lone Star Governance. And then on the twenty-fifth, we really want to be able to go through, we'll have data sets. We'll have all of our data from our end of the year assessments like MAP and M-Class and Circle. We'll have all that data. We'll also have the results from our um STAR and EOC exams. Now those will be preliminary, but they're pretty good. Dr. Cobb does a really good job of scrubbing that. And so as a board, you'll have, we will have that data. So we can come together using that data and start setting some of these um measures of success. Ultimately, begin to set that strategic plan, um board and superintendent goals. By the time we leave that day, maybe over uh ambitious, but we want to be able to draft some of those goals. Because what we want to be able to do uh from our senior leadership team, from our campus leaders, is to be able to have our goals set for August. When our teachers come back, our principals come back, they need to be able to take these goals and, and embed them in their campus improvement goals. And so what we would um like to be able to do is to launch this strategic plan every student, every teacher, every day, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-seven. If y'all can believe that. At a convocation where we're able to bring our teams together, not only the schools, because this strategic plan embodies every single employee. All five thousand two hundred of us should be able to see ourselves in this work and together be able to push our district far. Um, so the work will begin on May twenty-fifth. Yes? Yes, everybody? All in?
All in?
Yep. We have a couple of days planned um for us to come together and do this work, so. Dr. Hannah Hosen shared this with us. We'll have some data so we can make data-driven decisions. And if there's additional um data that you would like to have, please let um Dr. Hannah Hosen know early enough so we can have it ready for our, our um training, goal-setting session on the twenty-fifth.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. Thank you, Ms. Durant, and thank you all. Um, the other piece of data is that school quality survey. We'll have that results by early June, so we'll also be able to use them in this process.
We've got work to do. Any questions? Alright, thank you, Dr. Hannah Hosen. Our next item for discussion is our continuing education conference attendance. Um, as you know, the board has a policy in place for conferences and that we attend are limited to uh certain organizations like TASB. Uh, whenever we have travel outside of what's outlined in the policy, it takes a vote from the board. And so Trustee McDaniel's is planning to attend a session that she'd like our approval on for her to go and I'd like for her to speak to it at this time.
Thank you, Madam President, I won't be before you, Mom. Um, Dr. Hannah Hosen just mentioned when we went over our strategic plan, how when it comes to our core values, um, we are leading by example. And so one of our values is that we strive for excellence in all that we do. Um, and so that is what I'm seeking to do um through this continuing education um opportunity. I am a part of a fellowship called School Board Partners, which um is a nationwide fellowship that focuses on, um specifically on new board members development. So provides professional development. Um, there are monthly sessions where school board members nationwide convene virtually. Um, we have um mentors, so I have a mentor that I meet with every month, um as well as a coach who helps with um policymaking. So I'm learning all about just even deeper when it comes to school governance, school budgeting, policymaking and all of those things. Um, and this fellowship is at no cost. There are though in-person convenings. One of them, unfortunately COVID ramped up in the spring and so it was virtual. But there is one coming up in the summer in Denver. Um, and I am seeking to attend that and would love board support um for the travel.
I read this explanation, thought it was just absolutely wonderful. Usually I would uh vote based on, is this going to, I mean, it's wonderful for you, is it wonderful for the board? And I'd say yes, absolutely. And I assume we have money in the budget for this, so.
I would also.
I think you're good to go.
I'm, I'm also a School Board Partners fellow, actually nominated trustee McDaniel. Um, they will reimburse the district for this. Um, so I was able to buy my own ticket and then I will get reimbursed by School Board Partners. So if we approve money for her to, the upfront money, we can get it back from School Board Partners.
Even better.
Madam President, I move that the board would approve trustee McDaniel, Natasha McDaniel, to attend the professional development in Denver, Colorado.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by trustee Newhouse and seconded by trustee Adams for trustee McDaniel to attend the School Board Partnership Professional Development in Denver. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. You can vote too. That motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
No, absolutely. For our next item, I'd like to again recognize our chief of innovation, Dr. Matthew Parasoff.
Thank you, President Durant. Uh, this item can be found in your red folder. It is a memorandum of understanding with Prairie View A&amp;M University. The purpose of the A, uh MOU is to provide teachers with an opportunity to be part of a Spring ISD customized cohort who will be completing an accelerated master's degree in educational administration and receive their principal as an instructional leader certificate. One of the, one of the areas that we've been working, as Dr. Hannah Hosen shared, is our grow our own programs. And this MOU has come together through the partnership of our workforce development team, our school leadership office and human resources as we look to build um our future administrators from within. Um, the great things about this program um will be that it's one hundred percent online. Um, it will also be completed in four semesters. So instead of the traditional five semesters or two years, um they'll be able to graduate in four in, in December, um with it starting in August of this next school year. Um, additionally, they are integrating within the curriculum our own Spring ISD leadership profile, our leadership definition, um as well as our Springway systems. So as the principals are taught, um from research perspective, they will also connect those to our Springway. Um, they have um also agreed to waive the application fee and the GRE requirements for our um applicants. So we are asking that the board to include this item on the consent agenda um and to approve contracting with Prairie View A&amp;M and to authorize the superintendent to execute the contract.
Do we have the ten required participants for the cohort?
So um we are actually advertising now. Um, we have hand-selected um high achieving teachers um based on the, the results of what we've seen from the work that our workforce development team has done, as well as from student achievement um as individuals that we would um elect to handpick as part of the program. But we've also advertised the opportunity to all staff. And there will be an information session on May the sixteenth um where teachers can come and learn um about what the program is going to offer.
Why do you think they waived the GRE?
Um, the GRE has been less of a um, yeah, predictor of um graduate level work um as it had been in the past. So it's something that we see common um at, at many universities today is it's not, doesn't have the impact that it, that it once has. Um, as far as a requirement, the GRE is one component of the many components that they do review in accepting applicants.
How are we ensuring that it's an equitable opportunity for all that want to participate in this program?
Absolutely. Um, so um part of the review process um will be done in partnership with Spring and Prairie View A&amp;M. Um, there will be the requirements that they would have to be part of a graduate level program. Um, but we will also be um working with um our, our teachers who are looking to be administrators. Um, and as part of our recruitment efforts, um we are working to ensure that we have a um a full representation of the teachers across our district at, at all of our schools um and is, and across um at, at various ethnic cities.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I was just thinking on your question and then I was thinking about the, the, some of the stipends or even some of the um, the additional funds that were given to teachers. So I was wondering if there was a way for us to use that in, instead of a bonus or a stipend payment, we could use that as a way, as a grant to help them with this school.
Thought this was free. No.
No.
Oh.
Oh, no, it is, it is not, uh, it is not a free program. And they did waive some items, and they're also looking at some additional supports that can be provided. Um, but they haven't been able to finalize um some of some of that funding. So some of the conversation was providing a tablet to teachers. Um, that would so that it would assist them in the online classes. I mean, they're looking at several different options.
Okay, yeah, it does state that the student is still still responsible for payment.
Do we have a fi- do we have a figure on the money that it's going to cost then?
I do not have that in front of me. We can get that um to you. It is based on the um, the normal rate.
So I think the most important piece as we reached out, as I reached out to Prairie View, is looking for universities that are willing to incorporate. Our needs and responsiveness. When you look at the program, it is one that's um focused on cultural awareness and equity. Um, so that's the first piece. The second piece is them, as Dr. Parasol um said. Not only giving them the theory and tho- that curriculum, but embedding our leadership definition, embedding our Springway systems and routines. And then the last piece is the idea of being able, I don't want to say too compacted, but oftentimes you end up. Going to the university and trying to get your masters in three years, it seems like it drags out. So they were um them working with their own um governing board, able to, number one, make it. We'll start, the students will start in August of twenty twenty-two, this August. And they will, you know, pending their certification exam, be certified as a uh, an administrator in December. Or they'll finish their program, I should say, in December of twenty twenty-three. So you look at it, it's like a year and a half. And so the other pieces, number one, um is also that it's online. Our teachers oftentimes have a hard time driving to SAM or drive even to PB. It's it's a drive. So for them to do it online, and then the last piece is the support from their professors. What was really interesting is I had um Dr. Harris, Latracy Harris, and Dr. Parasol in the in the call with me. And they like knew all the professors there, um because that's the relationship. So for us, we haven't secured the funding. Um, we're always looking for um that, and as you see, our ESTR money right now, it's pretty tight. But it is something that we are looking for, uh because it's just an additional expense uh for our teachers. But also I know that our teachers, anyone like myself, I know I paid for all my degrees, but it was going in a cohort. When you have them understand where you're coming from, that makes the big difference.
And we actually met one of the first teachers that would be happy to uh sign up for this. She was our grant winner that, not grant, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong group. She was the uh, the board, so I'm still with the foundation.
Recognition.
She was our board recognition employee that uh spoke to us over at Bailey yesterday. This is her direction she wants to go in. Yeah.
Right. Ms. Reynolds, ready to sign up?
Yes.
It it really is going to be a great opportunity for um our staff um who participate. And and as we work through that leadership pipeline through workforce, um that the work will connect directly and we'll be building leaders at a faster rate.
Is the board okay with this going on the consent agenda? Any objection? Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Parasol. For our next item, I'd like to again recognize our chief of schools, Dr. Miguel Perez.
Thank you so much, President Durant. So I have two items. The first item that I'm going to present is uh the acceptance of donated funds. Uh, this is very exciting. So uh basically Booker Elementary was selected uh by Adopt a Classroom dot org. For the amount of, to receive the amount uh of about ten thousand dollars. And this was donated by. Team Gilman Subaru of North Houston. And what they do is they actually donate the funds to Adopt a Classroom dot org. Adopt a Classroom dot org selects a campus, and so Booker Elementary Principal Womack was selected to receive the funds. And the way they uh these funds work, it's it's very exciting because the teachers receive an email, kind of like a uh code, like a debit card. And Booker will get to select twenty teachers and they'll get five hundred dollars that they're they'll, they are able to. To use to purchase online. Uh, this is oh, this will be open up and it'll open up in in August. And so the twenty teachers will have the opportunities to go in and shop a lot of teacher resources. And for those of us who've been teachers, you know how much money you spend out of your own pocket. And so even though they get a lot of resources, they they still, right, teachers still want to uh. Buy things for the classroom or additional supplies, or they they typically have a box for kids to come in and and get little gifts. So um I am asking, uh requesting the board uh for them to accept uh these donated funds. And again, the funds are not going to be monetary, but they'll be actually used through Adopt a Classroom dot org.
So I wish this was around when I was teaching. But as I see Mr. Corman back there leaning against the wall, you said the teacher will receive an email, and they got me to thinking about cybersecurity and. Like what we're training our teachers to do when they get an email like that, so.
And actually, interestingly enough, um that I was talking to uh Jeff Corman, and I received the school quality report, right? And then it said, Dr. Inojosa, and I'm like, no, someone is trying to fish me, and then I deleted it, right? And I sent it to him, I said, you opened this. Because every time you open the email, you have to do a course, right? And so uh it's part of the process, and the course is pretty lengthy. I've I've been guilty of opening emails that I wasn't supposed to. Because, you know, y- you want to be responsive to people, so I've learned to go through him. So yes, uh i- i- it is something that's huge and it's big, so um I I digress.
I I agree. This is really the way to do it, because um when I was at Science Department Chair, there, I had teachers spending so much of their own money. And I kept saying, please give me receipts, please give me receipts. Well, teachers are so busy and they're all so into it. They just say, oh, don't bother, you know, and they're spending hundreds of their own dollars. And uh to have the teachers able to just have a like a little account where you go in and you can order your five hundred dollars worth of stuff. It's just, I mean, this is the way to do it. This is wonderful.
But you used to be able to, when I was teaching, you could write that off. They got rid of that that deduction that you could take for to write off. I used to, it was five hundred dollars that you got as a credit from the IRS, and it's gone. So we need this for our folks.
Good.
Perfect. And Principal Womack will be here on Tuesday to be recognized.
Thank you. Fantastic. All right.
Okay, the second item is located on page eighty. And this is uh something that uh every school district in Region Four engages in a partnership. And I'm, I am going to be asking the board uh to use this MOU and get with a partnership with the Harris County Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program. And and the idea is that uh e- every year, Spring ISD proposes to enter into a contract with the Harris County. To reserve three discretionary spaces for placement for students in the JJ AEP program. Uh, and these are students typically that are either expelled and or uh who commit offenses outside. And uh through a court order, they get placed there, and that's why we have the the ability to have discretionary and or mandatory placements. And we have the contract on page eighty-one, if you want to read it. This is something that we do every year. Uh, and we have uh the the latest data that I have. For the twenty twenty-one school year, we have not had any students uh in this program. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we have not had any. Uh, in twenty nineteen, we did have two discretionary uh placements, and we did have three mandatory for that year. So I just wanted to share that piece of data with uh with the board.
In the past, I have not looked at it in detail like I did this time. And uh for uh the board on page eighty-one, when they talk about category A students under section thirty-seven point zero zero seven. I just Googled it to see what law was that, and it's the Texas Education Code. And it gets very specific about uh the infractions that cause you to have a placement like this. And they're pretty serious crimes, but I, what is also interesting is that you, the students have due process. You know, then it don't just get automatically thrown in, that uh it really has to go through a legal process. And also that there were uh special dispensation for and handling for sped students and that sort of thing. So it just um looks like it's trying to uh, let's say. Get really dangerous students out of our schools and but to make sure that they get their uh rights respected. Okay.
That that is correct. So the idea uh with it is that they do get rehabilitation uh and through a community-based program and support systems as well.
Any additional questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Dr. Perez. For our next item, I would like to recognize our executive chief of district operations, Mark Miranda.
Thank you, President Durant. Uh, Dr. Hannah Hosen, members of the board were on page eighty-eight. We've talked about this in previous meetings. This is the facility condition assessment that corresponds to the earlier um conversations with Baselease. The facility condition assessment is an assessment that will provide us with information concerning the needs in our facilities. Uh, from mechanical, electrical, plumbing, architectural systems, roofing, food service, accessibility, and others. Um, and it's something that we would like to uh propose to move forward on. It's uh, the assessment will cover about forty-five locations and over five million square feet in our school district. And will end up providing us with a prioritized identified list of our deficiencies um in order. Uh, and um in addition to developing cost estimates um in repair estimates as well. Questions?
Price tag was an eye-opener.
It is. They.
Well, it's just, I assume this is incredibly detailed.
Yes.
So that we know exactly.
It's.
What needs to be done.
Lots of boots on the ground.
Yeah.
Uh, by professionals in all of these fields, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, uh structural. Um, and they will be visiting every campus, having conversations with um our maintenance teams, campus personnel. And documenting all of the needs at the campuses for us, and then creating the facility um condition index for every campus. That'll really be beneficial for us going forward with um the conversations we've been having.
I know that we need this assessment. Uh, I I'm sad for how much time it's going to take to do spring high school. Because I've been in lab rooms there where uh there's holes in the floor, and you can see a foot down below the tiles.
Yeah.
Uh, I've been in hallways where the roof collapsed and was dripping water on us. A- and that's just a little bit of the building I was in, you know, so.
Yeah.
I, and I've heard that in the library, they have such humidity that they have to have dehumidifiers all the time to protect the books. You know, I'm just imagining all the things they have to get into there.
So the conversation with us and um Otto Ark, who's leading the project, um, spring high school may be an exception to some of this. Because we know um based on the conversations that we've had previously, that spring high school is probably not a repair. Um, it it looks like we're leaning towards a replace as opposed to a repair. Um, and so we may not take as much time. We're we're going to have those discussions um once this is approved. Because you're exactly right. I mean, they could spend half their time um at spring high school trying to document things that. We don't necessarily intend to repair um if we move to a replace for that facility.
So chief, I didn't, I don't have attachment A here. What are the twelve facilities that we don't?
The brandy facilities from the uh previous bumper.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did have to ask my husband what the MEP systems were, and apparently mechanical, electrical, and plumbing.
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. We'll spell it out next time.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda.
Thank you.
For our next item, I'd like to recognize our chief of human resources and human capital accountability, Julie Yeo.
Good evening, President Durant, board of trustees, and Dr. Hannah Hosen. Um, we are on page ninety-seven of your packet. And this item runs all the way to page uh one eighteen.
Excuse me, we did get an updated version. So I think it's ninety-nine.
Sorry about that.
You guys are following along.
No problem. Okay. So we are here to request the uh renewal of our um local innovation renewal plan, which we commonly refer to as our District of Innovation, our DOI. By state statute, every five years, if you want to continue with it, it has to be renewed. Um, I think if. You've got the copy, including the color copy of the copy, starting there, so if we can begin right there on the very first page. We've laid out the timeline that we used here, and we had to make a few little adjustments on the timeline, but I'd like to stop on that page and refer to. Um, the district advisory committee approval. Um, we actually met with the ACE Committee on March thirtieth. And in fact, they did vote and with a ninety-eight percent passage rate of to approve the District of Innovation Renewal Plan. And of course, because it expires um in just a few days, we're here to ask for the board to approve our new plan. We placed it um in your materials in advance so that you would have an opportunity to go through it. Um, however, um as you can note here, um three of our trustees, um President Durant, Ms. Newhouse, and Dr. Jensen. Actually served on the renewal um plan committee and had the opportunity to work with the team that was gathered. That put together our new plan here. I actually would um simply like to know um. If there are any specific questions, since I do know that you've had some time to study and work with it.
I'd like to make a general comment that when I went through the um. Laws it is on different things, on governance and uh professional development and what um ninety percent attendance rate, all those things. And I'm thinking the state of Texas really needs to update. Yes, because this is uh applies to a different era. I don't know if other people have that same impression with this, that we're, we're adapting to the new world and Texas needs to too.
Yes, ma'am.
So Dr. Are you asking for approval tonight or Tuesday?
No, ma'am. We can go on the consent agenda on Tuesday. That would be just fine. Thank you.
Just in support of what Dr. Jensen just said, right? So I don't know how old the code is for this, but at a certain point, like. It's no longer an innovation. It's what you kind of need to do because it's what works. So it's, there should be new innovations in the code.
I agree. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Yeo. All right. Um, are we, we.
I did have a question.
Okay.
On page, uh my page one hundred and fourteen, at the bottom of the page.
On page, uh, my page one hundred and fourteen, at the bottom of the page. Apparently, uh, we're getting per- trying to get permission to, uh, have teachers do professional development outside the school day. And I just had a question. Are we paying them extra money to come that extra time out of the school day?
So how we've used this particular exemption is basically the exemption would limit the time that teachers could do their planning and professional development to the time that instruction is happening for students. That's what the old-fashioned statute says. Well, what we use this for was to do our big district-wide professional development days where the teachers were able to cross into anything that they was of interest to them regardless of the school it was offered at so that they could actually do so. We also use it at the campus level because then principals could actually set some earlier um, times in the morning, maybe when, when you first got there, they could set a group to have their PLC time actually at the very beginning of the day. They could also have a group that could start, um, and could run into when kids might be lining up to for dismissal, they could still finish it. Other than that, we would have had to wait till the first bell rang and instruction started for students. And when it ended for students, everything would have to be within those timeframes.
So this being one of the exceptions is being a District of Innovation, it's given us an opportunity to to streamline our professional development to better support the needs of our teachers.
Absolutely.
And and so it doesn't interfere with instructional time.
Absolutely.
I was imagining they were gonna have to come in on Saturdays or something like that. I I didn't realize that we had enough professional development days already, uh, scheduled into our calendar. That's wonderful.
Yes, we do have enough baked in, but we do have two big giant events, one in the fall and one in the spring. We changed the names up, but basically it's a big learning fair where, um, we offer, you know, that's half a day Saturday. Teachers can come in and go to anything that they'd like deeper knowledge on.
Dr. Inhosa makes us dance.
Yes, she does.
You know, embarrassed me enough now that I'm actually asking my daughter and granddaughter to show me some of the moves. She's trying to get with it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hill. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Police, Ken Cobra.
I see Durant and Board Trustees and Dr. Hinojosa. Um, this is should be, should be located on page one thirteen unless you're it's been moved in your, uh, one nineteen, okay? So this is the contract I'm asking you to move forward to consent agenda for next week and approval. It's a contract between Spring State Police Department and the Department of Defense. It allows us to, um, obtain excess equipment they have for public safety. That's pretty straightforward. It's, uh, gonna be, it would be free equipment that we would basically receive. Only thing we would need to do is, is, uh, travel to the locations to assess it and pick it up and maintain it.
There's some pretty serious equipment described in this. Uh, I I know you, um, can't get any aircraft, apparently. But, uh, I guess, uh, you were talking about having rescue vehicles that are, uh, can navigate high water. Is that one of the ones you want?
Yes, ma'am. Most likely would be ve- vehicles for rescue, uh, those type of piece of equipment. And those are things that could be an expense if we were to acquire, we will be responsible for maintaining. But it's specifically for, uh, equipment for protective and and public safety for the community.
Yeah, I I just thought that was a really useful thing, the way we are going here in Texas. Uh, there were other things like, uh, robots. Are you interested in those?
We definitely would explore it if we had an opportunity of, there are opportunities. It depends on what it is. There are certain laws. It's the state of Texas requires from police departments, if we have, uh, a robot or a, um, any kind of vehicle that's remotely operated. So we would explore if it was beneficial for our safety, we definitely would explore the options.
Well, if we thought there was an explosive device somewhere, I I could see how that might be a useful thing to have.
Right.
Yeah. Um, and obviously you don't need to avoid mines, right?
I'm hoping not. We're gonna hope so.
Uh, so are you thinking more small arms and ammunition, that kind of stuff?
No, ma'am. Mostly was, it's, uh, I think we're, we were, we're pretty sufficient with that. It would be some of the larger vehicles that are, are built and purchased by the government that are in excess for them. So mostly rescue vehicles for our, for the community.
Okay.
Our local community.
Relieves me.
Yes, ma'am. So just ask you if you would allow it to move to consent agenda for approval.
You had your light off and on. You good?
Okay.
All right. Um, without any objections, we will add this to the consent agenda for Tuesday night. Thank you, Chief Cobra.
Thank you.
For our next item, I'd like to again recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Anne Westwood.
Thank you, President Durant. And we are on page one thirty-seven with our monthly list of taxpayer refunds. Okay, okay. If there are no questions, we'll move to page one forty-one, which is our monthly list of cooperative purchases that are over fifty thousand dollars. Can you see a couple of items on here that either we've had some discussions about this evening or at previous board meetings where the purchase order has come through and it's showing up on our cooperative list? I guess the only question I had here was on page one forty-two, and that was the Proximity Learning Incorporated virtual tur- tutoring services. Uh, it's a million dollars, over a million dollars. Was this, um, during the COVID time or? And this is the virtual, um, teachers. They're actually teaching too, in addition to tutoring. And it's one point two million, which is the not to exceed amount. But there's various amounts depending on how many periods the teacher teaches per day or how many tutorials that they, um, actually provide. So it's not one point two million, it's up to one point two million.
We just saw that in the budget, right?
In the S R two budget.
I have a question about the, um, the, the, the quaver. That's the social emotional learning curriculum?
It's actually the health, the health, um, textbooks. That's, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Same name, but different, different resource.
I had a question about the charging. I have that circle and I don't know why. It was so long ago, but, um, the charging stations. I guess I didn't understand why we had to have charging stations for the Chromebooks. When we have, we pay for electricity in the schools. I I didn't know if it was something.
It's on page one forty-one.
Matt, do you want to take that? I think it's part of that work.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so when I shared last month regarding our Blended Learning Innovator Program, um, each campus that was, um, part of that, the eleven schools, each of them received five charging carts. So they could place them in various, um, strategic locations on the campus so that students were able to recharge, um, their devices.
I just didn't understand. We have electricity in the building, so I didn't quite understand what the purpose, is it something different? Um?
Yes, they're, they're racks. So they're racks that have built-in chargers, you know, similar to like a laptop chargers for their Chromebooks. And so the students are able to place their device on the rack and then plug in their computer and it charges it. Charges, charges their, yeah, multiple devices.
It's easy storage.
I understand that. But my question is, what's wrong with an electrical board? That we're trying to figure out how to cut, you know, scale back on the budget. I understand what you're saying.
So the fire code does prevent, you know, like at our homes, we'd have power strips running all over the place. Um, and that's something that with the fire code we cannot have. Um, and what happens in these carts, the cables are managed. Um, so it also helps that from that safety perspective of not having tripping hazards, um, and ensuring that there's a safe location to place them. Um, you know, sometimes you've seen them just kind of stacked on top of each other. It it could become a, you know, it helps us ensure that the devices are protected as well as our students and staff.
So, is it, because we, we bug our kids about taking their power cords with them to school. Does this mean they don't really need to bring their power cords to school?
So there are, these are fi- these are five per campus on these innovative campuses. So, um, you know, as we continue and, you know, this definitely may come up in our bond as we're looking at technology as well, um, as the, there are additional locations. So so maybe students are working at a desk, they can have a place to charge their devices at that time. Um, but if there's a, if there's an activity, let's say they're going to the library, let's put them on the cart for charging. Um, and so it, it creates a space, um, for, for strategic work. Maybe they're going to lunch, right? And you have those charging stations at lunch, uh, and just provides another opportunity for the students who forgot to charge it, uh, overnight, you know.
We should continue to insist they take care of it.
I have a quick question for the, um, going back to the proximity learning with the virtual teachers. Are we tracking, just thinking of our return on investment, are we tracking, um, student outcomes depending on if they were instructed virtually through this vendor?
So basically, the proximity learning teachers are remote. We have an adult here in the classroom locally with the students. The proximity teachers are certified teachers, Texas certified teachers, and they actually provide everything, the assessments, they do the grading, they turn the grades into the school, and then they're loaded in. So it is basically just your average, well, not average, it's classroom instruction with a twist, but it's still just everything that would normally happen, students passing, you know, needing in- intervention if they're not, um, needing two tutorials. All those things would happen. It's the same as though, um, it was just a normal classroom. The only thing that's different is your teacher is on the screen instead of being in the room. But there is an adult in the room there as well to help facilitate and help with kids that might need some assistance. They can, you know, get a message to the teacher. So it's very interactive and they're working together.
Do we know the comparison of students that are participating in the virtual proximity learning and those that have face-to-face in their scores and their outcomes?
We don't yet.
I think that was her question.
We just started in January. And so we, we, at the end of the year, we'll be able to look at that when we, we'll get the students' grades and we can do some comparisons. I think we have about eighteen classrooms, um, that are using, um, the proximity learning right now.
Yeah, I would be curious to see that data. Thank you. I assume this sounds a little bit like blended learning if you've got a teacher in the classroom as well. Uh, is this a possibility to help with the teacher shortage? That it, perhaps we could have in a, like a para in the room with the teacher on the.
So, yes, the person in the room doesn't have to be a teacher. It, in many cases, the schools are using pairs. And, um, while it's probably a wild idea, we have been having some conversations, um, already about how could we create our own model and use some of our fantastic teachers and have them piped into classrooms where they can provide instruction, absolutely. And yes, it would help with the teacher shortage.
Five to ten years. While we are filming our key performance teachers and sharing that. Absolutely. Any other questions? So Westbrooks?
Okay, if there are no questions, then our next item is on page one forty-four. And we have a request for proposal for plumbing fixtures and parts and supplies. And so we had a total of five vendors that responded, and we're recommending that we award three vendors the ability to provide those services for the district. No questions, then I'll move to the next, uh, request for proposal, which is for electrical parts and supplies, and that starts on page one forty-nine. I think I skipped one. We're on page one forty-six, and that's the request for proposal for lighting parts and supplies. And so there were two vendors and both were deemed to be qualified to provide the service, and so we're recommending the award to both vendors.
Ms. Westbrooks?
Yes.
Are, are we getting, um, fewer respondents to RFPs? I, I, I hear talk about supply shortages and is that causing there to be fewer respondents?
It's possible. I can speak back, back with procurement and look in comparison to a few years ago versus now. Um, we have some that are just specialized to a extent that we never get a lot of responses. But I can go back and just do a little comparative analysis with these. As you can see, we had quite a few that actually viewed it. There were two hundred and thirty-seven views, but we only received two responses. So it could be because they weren't able to get the supplies.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, like, if that will, because there is, is, logistically in the supply chain is more constrained, whether that's causing that and maybe also a part responsible for our cost increase that we're seeing. So, thank you.
Yes, take a look at that. Okay, so now we're on page one forty-nine, which is electrical parts and supplies. And in this case, we only had one vendor respond. It is an incumbent vendor that we've had a relationship with in the past and has provided services for the district in the past, but we're recommending award to the one vendor for electrical parts and supplies. And then the request for proposal on page one fifty-two is for custodial chemicals, cleaners, paper products and supplies. And so we had twelve responses to that. And as you can see that there's a award or no award based on, um, the vendor and based on the product. And we are recommending for vendors be allowed to provide those services and supplies to our, um, our district.
What does no award mean? That they couldn't provide those materials?
Either they couldn't provide it or what they were providing wasn't up to standard. I think there's quite a bit of testing that goes into those products.
Yeah, so on, on this, there are, there are different, um, options for some of the products as well. Many of them are listed on the RFP. Um, and so the team went to great lengths this time around to be able to do some blind testing. So they received samples for all of the products, uh, to determine. So some of the vendors would submit several different types of products, but whether it was a paper product or a cleaning product, um, and we would select the, the product that we preferred. Um, and all of it was done with a, a blind testing, and so we received them. Um, kind of stripped them of all their identifiers and we had committees that were testing them from a blind, uh, standpoint. Um, so that there would no be, be no, uh, built-in biases towards a particular product so that we could be assured that we would receive the best product. Um, and then, of course, um, coupled that input with the value, uh, from the actual cost, um, in the vendor, and that's how we came up with the awards. The, the, a lot of the vendors will submit a lot of different products because they're just kind of giving you as much as you can. It actually benefits us from, from a cost and from a, uh, performance standpoint to, to limit the number of different types of products we have to warehouse.
Okay, so our next item is on page one fifty-seven, and this is our annual list of, um, brokers and dealers that we use for our investing of our funds. And so we know that we are always making sure that we're keeping our funds safe and that our principal is safe. But we also would like to earn some interest when the opportunity arises. And so what we have here is the list of broker-dealers that we actually invest with and that we, um, have funds in the different pools. Each person that's on this list has to sign, and that's what you'll see starting on page one fifty-eight. They have to sign, saying that stay They have to sign staying stating that they will abide by all rules of the Public Funds Investment Act. They've had a copy of the district's policy and everything aligns with the district's policy and the P F I requirements. And so we have text pool, which is a a investment pool specifically for local governments. And P N C Bank is our bank depository. That's formerly known as Compass Bank. And then Texas Range Investment Program, that is a a pool as well, an investment pool. Not a lot going on in the world of investing right now. Not a lot of interest to be earned. But we do, we do earn as much as we possibly can. Okay, and if there are no questions on that item, then the last item this evening begins on page one sixty two. And this is an annual item that's required to come before the Board of Trustees. And it is a certification that's required to ensure that the district has all of the required curriculum that is in all of the instructional materials that cover the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, the TEACs. And so we're filling out this survey, answering all the questions about what curriculum, instructional materials, and any supplemental materials the district is using. The survey was completed by our Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Diakka Melendez. And you can go through and see at each grade level, each subject, which um resources are being used. And then once the board approves, then I believe Dr. Inhosa has to officially submit it to T E A. And as mentioned, it is a an annual requirement that we bring forward.
Uh I have one question because, um well, I was very interested that they even included uh teacher prepared materials as well as publishers. But I got on to page one seventy eight. And this here's the question, does your district have materials to cover one hundred percent of the grades K five science TEACs? And the answer is no. So what do we need to add to this?
It may have been a um accidental click. We'll go back and adjust to ensure because our curriculum does um cover does cover all.
Cause it said yes for the middle school and high school, but it said, I thought, well, maybe you needed a supplement.
Yes, ma'am, and and we'll verify. I know sometimes we print out these, they also kind of shift. So we'll verify from the live form.
Okay.
Okay, Madam President, if there are no more questions, that is the last item under financial services.
I did have a real quick question. That very la- on page one sixty, the uh the third broker that we have, I noticed that the legal language on their acknowledgement is a little different from the other two. Does that really matter much?
The primary, every every broker has some little things that they want to put in themselves. But the primary thing, you said it's on page one sixty?
One sixty.
It was the third, well, my one sixty, it was the third. But what's most important is that they accept the district's policy and the P F I, the um Public Funds Investment Act. That's the two primary things that we have to get them to sign off on.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Westbrooks. So the Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one dot zero seven one dot zero seven two dot zero seven four and dot zero seven six. Now voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes in this open session, and the time is now eleven fifty P M. We will now reconvene and resume the work session of the Board of Trustees. The time is now one oh eight A M. We will, May sixth. We will now address the items discussed in closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the non renewal of term contracts of the following employees. Antoinette Dargans, Charles Jackson, as presented in closed session and authorize the superintendent or designate to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employees pursuant to chapter twenty one of the Texas Education Code.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved by the board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the non renewal of the term contracts of the following employees, Antoinette Dargans and Charles Jackson, as presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent or designate to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employees pursuant to chapter twenty one of the Texas Education Code. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board issue a district, school district teaching permit to the following employees. Fahim Ansari and Bradley Neal for the purpose of teaching non core career and technology courses and to authorize the superintendent or designate to notify the Commissioner of Education of the board's actions.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Newhouse and seconded by trustee Adams that the board issue a school district teaching permit to the following employees. Fahim Ansari and Bradley Neal for the purpose of teaching non core career and technology courses and to authorize the superintendent or designate to notify the Commission of Education of the board's action. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Do we have any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to renew for a one year period the probationary contracts of the employees identified in the superintendent's recommendation as presented in closed session.
A second.
It's been moved by trustee Justin and seconded by trustee Correa that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to renew for a one year period the probationary contracts of the employees identified in the superintendent recommendation as presented in closed session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to renew for a one year period the term contracts of employees identified in the superintendent's recommendation as presented in closed session.
A second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee McDaniel and seconded by trustee Newhouse that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to renew for a one year period the term contracts of the employees identified in the superintendent's recommendation as presented in closed session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
I move that the Board of Trustees approve resolution of T E A docket number one four five S E zero two two according to the terms discussed in closed session.
A second.
It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Correa that the Board of Trustees approve resolution of T E A docket number one four five S E zero two 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 according to the terms discussed in closed session. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Given there are no other items on tonight's agenda, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Newhouse that we adjourn tonight's meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Being no further business, this meeting is officially adjourned tonight at one thirteen A M, May sixth.